Oh, no. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Faster than normal. Welcome to the April 6, 2022, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us tonight, and I do mean each of you. Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting at this time.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please be clear into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time is expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the March 2, 2022, regular city commission meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Traeger. If there are no questions or comments, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries sluggish, 7-0. Okay, at this time, we will have our agenda changes, if there are any, from our city manager.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, we're going to be pulling item 9B, Smoking Lounges' Land Development Code text amendment, and will be brought back. We're adding to the agenda item 8Z, $500 to Catalyst Global Youth Initiatives, Inc., in support of their summer program at Campbell High School, and $150 to the National Hookup of Black Women, Inc., Volusia County Chapter, from the Bike Week sponsorship funds of Commissioner Paula R. Reed, and also to presentations, Mr. Keith Willis.
I'd like to make a correction for the record. It's Campbell Middle School, not Campbell High. Yes, sir.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't think we have anybody in here who went to Campbell High. Looking around. Not even you guys, huh? I know.
So, in addition with Keith Willis, the 6A presentation.
Okay. All right. We have a motion.
Motion to accept the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
We'll take the motion and a second from the same two parties. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. So now we'll move on to item number six, which is our presentations, and Mr. Keith Willis to present.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to introduce our new leisure service employees. First, we have Caitlin Presswood. She's our leisure service event specialist. And then we have Ms. Venitra Dukes. She's our education enrichment coordinator.
These are two positions that you all encourage us to bring on, to help us with the special events coordinations between our, that the city holds, but also have a liaison, and also the educational coordinator to deal with some of the COVID funds. And our staff, Mr. Willis, leading leisure services, and other staff members have selected two individuals who have already hit the ground running. We look forward to making sure that our events that take place, that the city hosts, but also in our community, are exceptional, and that the educational programs that you all have requested, that we do move forward with in our COVID funds, that our coordinator in that area will be able to move those forward. And I think that the mayor actually knows one of the individuals well.
Yes.
Thank you both.
We're glad to have both of you with us. Would you tell us a little bit about yourselves?
Sure.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. So, like Keith said, my name is Katie Prestwood. I graduated from University of Florida. I got my bachelor's degree in Parks and Recreation, and I received my master's degree in Management. For the last seven or so years, I've been working in the hospitality industry. I have a background in food and beverage, as well as special events, so I'm very excited to be here, working for the beautiful city of Daytona Beach.
Glad to have you. Welcome, Caitlin. Ms. Dukes?
Good evening. My name is Venitra Dukes. I am a native of Daytona Beach, born and raised, educated here, Tenth Bethune-Cookman University. I am coming from Campbell Middle School as a parent liaison. I look forward to continuing to serve the community.
All right.
Welcome.
And a few days ago, Ms. Dukes was my student. Well, thank you. Glad to have you both.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
So now we're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizens, during this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker is Vernon Weatherholt, and on deck is Brittany Adams.
My name is Vern Weatherholt, she'll live at 3 Grandville Circle, Daytona Beach. I think this is a great purchase. You know, I know the fire department definitely needs a new facility. I've been in the old one. We know the problems that it's had over the years with flooding, and so I definitely recommend that the city approve this, and I'm kind of wondering what's going to happen to the old department. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon.
Our next speaker is Brittany Adams, and on deck is Matthew Alvarez.
Good evening. I first want to just say thank you for allowing us this time to come. I'm here representing USRP Swim Team, and I just want to let you know how much this programming means to me and my boys. It first started when my, he was four, and now he's seven, when he almost drowned. And we put him into the swimming at Cypress Aquatic Center, and he learned how to swim, but he wasn't, you know, a good swimmer yet. And there I saw USRP there, with the team. And at first, you know, I had to take a break from work because of health issues, and I thought this wasn't affordable program, but comes to find out, it is. They have scholarships for kids and everything, and really pouring into the community, and it just means so much to me. We just recently found out that my son, he was diagnosed with a disability, and when I told the therapist about him being on this swim team, they were like, keep him. Please keep him there, because it is detrimental for his growth. His growth, motor skills, I'm sorry, has improved tremendously, and I'm just excited that he's a part of this program, and I hope that it's something that can continue on in the Daytona Beach area. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Alvarez, and on deck is Karina Harmon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Matthew Alvarez. My address is 405 Bayberry Lakes Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. I was born and raised in the city of Daytona Beach, and for almost five years, I have been swimming at Cypress Aquatic Center. I started out in the K P pool, not really knowing how to swim. Cypress Aquatic Center and the USRP Swim Team, they taught me how to swim, and now I'm getting faster in achieving my goals. And I'm just hoping that I will be able to continue all of this by swimming at a Cypress Aquatic Center and being able to continue achieving my goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Karina Harmon, with, I guess, Jack and Mila backing you up. Are there her kids? Karina Harmon.
Hi, I'm Karina, and this is Jack and Mila, and we're part of USRP Swim Team, and I just wanted to tell you how important USRP is to us. We came and moved here from New Hampshire in the middle of COVID, and my kids, I was homeschooling for about a year with COVID, and they weren't in any extracurriculars or anything at that time, because we were scared. But we found USRP, because it was an outdoor sport that I felt comfortable with my kids doing, and they love it, and we want to continue, and we hope that you guys will assist me that.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
And our final speaker on item number seven is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I'm going to move my topics around. Free is a good price. I've said that many times here. The YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, using our empty buildings. It is to our advantage to have the community come in to use our properties. Football clubs come in to use our property and doesn't cost us a dime. Look at the group behind me. You don't pay a dime to any of these people to run this club. They provide a service for free to the city of Daytona Beach. We should be looking for more groups that want to use our facilities and make it as easy as possible to use our facilities, because in using our facilities, it's our children that benefit. So I'm asking you not only to pass this, but looking for, in the future, for many more groups that are willing to do the same. Secondly, I'm glad you found the property, virtually middle of downtown, for the fire station. I'm almost positive you guys are going to pass that. And then, lastly, the repairs on the pier. I went and asked her, and she goes, well, with hurricanes and the problems and whatnot, we're going to have to repair the pier virtually every year. Teresa Don't had it for 17 years. It was never repaired, never fell into the ocean. Either we're not repairing it correctly, or we're doing something wrong, but we shouldn't have to be doing this every single year. I understand we've had that massive wave the other day, last year. That's unusual, but we've repaired this thing, just a major repaired, five times. So we can't keep doing this. There's something wrong. If we didn't do it for 17 years, and now we're doing it five times in six years or whatever, we really have to look at it, because it does get expensive. And people, they get in the habit of fishing. We would love to have them return to the middle of Daytona Beach beachside to fish. We don't want them to go somewhere else to fish. And if we keep driving them away, they will find someplace else to fish. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker. For the consent agenda.
Okay. That was the final speaker. Okay. We have the consent agenda in place, and it's been motioned.
Motion to approve. The consent agenda.
Okay.
Is she motioned to approve?
Yeah. A motion and a second. Okay. Before we vote on it, I just want to make sure that people know that if the pier wasn't repaired in 17 years, and then they sold the pier to the city, that's part of the reason that they sold us the pier. Let's just always realize there's more to a story. And if we hadn't bought the pier, it probably would have been no more. With that being said.
Mr. Mayor, could we get some, just additional information on 8B, which would be the local fiscal recovery grant with Home Spring Hope? Can somebody tell us exactly how that money is being spent? I think it's a worthwhile program. Thank you.
Thank you.
The program is what Commissioner May and Commissioner Reed are contributing towards the Home Spring Hope, that's building affordable housing to the area. This is the funds that are coming out of your.
Sorry about that. These are funds that are coming from Commissioner May and Commissioner Reed, out of their 250,000 ARPA funds for the Home Spring Hopes program for affordable housing, to help to provide education to navigation services and housing education programs for individuals who will qualify for these affordable homes. So these are funds that you have contributed out of your funds, as well as Commissioner Reed, to help this particular entity through your recovery grant agreements, and I think these are good funds that could be used in other areas, and not only for just Home Spring Hope, but any other entity that may want to do affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. No further questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Enjoy the pool.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings.
Yeah. We're going to leave.
Bye. Enjoy your pool.
Disperse.
Well, originally, there was a talk about charter, but we negotiated that.
Wow.
Yeah, right. It's a $2,000 agreement plus. At set to the child. Well, there were some, yeah, there were some earlier negotiations at the table. I think the city ended up giving back quite a lot of the original plan.
Every year. Item 9A is Development and Administrative Services, Planning Division, temporary Speedway Event Parking, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading of the hearing. An ordinance amending Section 5.4 of the city's Land Development Code to add temporary Speedway Event Parking as a temporary use for properties within one mile of the Daytona Beach International Speedway PDG District boundary, subject to use specific standards, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner May. We have any questions or comments?
And I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The second public hearing will be April 20. Okay, item 9B was pulled from tonight's agenda, so we're going to move on to item 9C. It's the Development and Administrative Services, Planning Division, Ashley Furniture-Tomoka Town Center Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the Ashley Furniture-Tomoka Town Center Proportionate Fair Share Agreement between the city, Ashley Global Retail LLC, and the county of Volusia, providing for the developer to pay a proportionate fair share contribution to Volusia County in relation to the Tomoka Town Center development, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have any questions or speakers?
I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here, on behalf of the applicant, for any questions.
No questions for Ms. Gao? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Now I'm going to move on to our administrative items, and item 10A is the city manager's office, Orange Avenue Recreation Center, repair or demolition item.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, I will say that I have lost more hair in the last two weeks than I've had in 10 years being bald. I have, I have heard from as many residents as you all probably have heard from on this particular item, and so I don't think any hair will grow again. But, but I wanted to share with you, one of the things that you all have been talking about for many years is the Orange Avenue Recreation Center. There was a workshop held on February 16, 2022, relative to the Orange Avenue Recreation Center, on which provided an opportunity for all of you to review the two estimates and assessments prepared by two separate Florida licensed general contractors. Alan Green Construction and Frank Flatt presented, in conjunction with Deputy City Manager Jim Morris, on the current status of the Recreation Center, and in their estimations, what would it take to restore the center to its original use. The Historic Preservation Board, after that workshop, I was tasked with meeting with the Historic Preservation Board and making a presentation on the Orange Avenue Rec Building, which was done. The Historic Preservation Board, at its March 15, 2022, meeting, voted to pursue making the center a local historic designation and restoring the structure to its days when it was first utilized. The purpose of this agenda tonight is to determine if there is a desire by the elected officials to restore the Orange Avenue Rec Center, or to move forward with demolition of this structure. I have, after the meeting of the Historic Board, seeing their desire to make it a historic designation, and listening to our elected officials at the meeting, I tasked our grant writer of Planning Solutions Corp. to present to me a summary of potential funding sources for the restoration of the City Island, its original name, Recreation Center on Orange Avenue. This is a high-level review of potential funding sources. The funding strategy will be further evaluated should a decision be made by the elected officials to move forward with a local historic designation. When we look at the many funding sources, we, just off a high level, she was able to pull, and this is based on conversations, if there was outside funds available, and this will be a tedious thing to request funding, so it's not just you're going to get funding because you asked for it. It's Volusia County Echo, State of Florida Division of Historical Resources, State of Florida Division of Historical Resources, small matching and special category, state legislative requests, racing and recreational facility districts, and various federal funding sources that can be utilized. That, based from the estimates of what could be matched from grant match, grant funding, as well as matches that will be required, could be $2.5 to $3.5 million that could be secured, just based on what, that simple review of these items. This is a political issue that people have been trying to bring city staff in, which we're not going to get involved in that process. We have two documents that were provided, and three documents, two documents were provided from images by Commissioner Traeger, and also images by Commissioner Cantu that were asked to put into the record, and also Commissioner Strickland has a video that he would like to put into the record, where you will be able to see, all of the commissioners were, afforded the opportunity to tour the facility, and I think many did tour the facility. And so, Mr. Mayor, it is our desire not to go back and forth as staff. The question is, do you want to pursue as an elected body, based on the recommendation from the Historic Board, for a local designation, or do you want us to bring back proposals for demolition of the City Island Rec Center, which is known as the Orange Avenue Rec Center?
I move that we move forward with designating the City Island Recreation Center as a local historic designation, and we move forward with renovating it.
Second.
All right. You have a motion, you have a second. You don't have the discussion yet, but you certainly have two people that know how they feel. So, accept that. All right?
So, that, that actually concludes, unless you have any particular questions. We, we just want to move forward. If you all advise us to look towards a historic designation, there are steps that we will have to take, or if you desire for us to bring back a proposal for demolition, we will do requests for proposals and those average costs. But that is the direction, and whatever direction you tell us to do as staff, we will move forward.
Okay.
Sure, and I think there were some pictures made available, but, Mr. Strickland, I, kid, Mr. Mayor, would you allow for the show?
We'll do a video. Okay, go ahead. Take your time, there. I'm looking at the pictures.
Yep, they're in order.
I also did want to state for the record, because there were comments made, that the images that were provided were from, some from the contractor's stuff, the city photographer actually went in and took many of the images that were provided at the last, at the presentation. Louis provided some of those pictures. So although you did receive images from commissioners as well, and you will see a video from Commissioner Strickland, I did not want someone to think that it was, all of the pictures came from the contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
In the video that Mr. Strickland has, we will make sure it becomes part of the record. I think it was sent already, and so we'll make sure it's part of the record as well.
Okay. I'm not actually big enough. Sorry. I hate Pepsi already. Started out with Pepsi before the start. I need to drink water.
This is the video that's provided by Commissioner Strickland.
And there was no audio for it, so.
He did not sing walking through the building.
Didn't sing.
This is the video that's provided by Commissioner Strickland.
And there was no audio for it, so...
He did not sing walking through the building.
Yeah.
The main hall area, scary action areas.
I just wanted to get that stuff for you.
I'm gonna remind people that all conversation takes place either at the day or around the election, so please do not shout from the audience.
We will just say this, that it is your right to speak. It is, it is everyone's right to speak and to be heard, but you can only, you, no but really, but, original commentary is appreciated, because you're trying to create a narrative and a dialogue for what you support that can be retained, so that a decision can be made. So let's be, be mindful of how to successfully advocate for what we desire tonight. But we look forward, I, I personally look forward to hearing from each of you.
Okay, our first speaker, I think it's Jacinta Matthew, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson. Is it Jacinta?
And please be sure to state your name and your address. Jacinta?
My name is Jacinta Matthew, 400 Oak Ridge Boulevard, Daytona Beach. I'm retired commander from the United States Navy. I recommended that the City Island Rec Center be saved. It was originally authorized by Eleanor Roosevelt and President Roosevelt to, during World War II, 1943, to have the building erected for the WACs, Women's Army Corps, and also for other militaries that served in the Daytona Beach area. Unfortunately, the building has been neglected at minimum for the past 10 years. The neglect does not justify that it be destroyed, especially since it's on the City Island Ballpark Historic Center District. And the Rec Center could very easily receive a historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Heath Street. I'm here tonight to advocate to have this building saved. I have a family that has served in the United States Army, the Navy, and the Air Force. My son served 28 years in the United States Army fighting for this country in Saudi Arabia, Persian Gulf, all over the world. So I'm saying tonight that we used to make then that building for our save our neighborhoods, and I was very appalled at the way the city of Daytona Beach sat there and let that building be neglected for many years. Now you're talking about tearing it down. Most of the residents that I've spoken to in this city and on my social media are terribly against this. You find money to spend on what you want to spend it on, you just said that you was gonna spend a lot of money on Main Street. The people in my zone do not want this building tore down. So I'm here tonight to say to you to get monies wherever you can find them, historically or whatever, to save this building. It's very important for this community, and it's the city's fault that that building was neglected all those years. So you can make up for that by getting the monies to save it. So I'm gonna say to you tonight, make it happen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lewis Matthew, and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
Evening, Lewis Matthew from Our Lady of Lords Veterans Outreach. I'll be reading comments from Patrick McAllister, who's a contributing writer for the Veterans Voice. There was a time when Daytona Beach was on the front lines of World War II. Not figuratively, literally, it was an enthusiastic group of patriotic, strong women marched to Daytona Beach in 1942 to start basic training. That year, German U-boats prowled Florida's shores unfettered. This was Operation Drumbeat, which cost an unprepared American hundreds of ships and thousands of lives. Folks waking on the Daytona Beach boardwalk were aware of a U-boat was watching. This was the 1942 world of Barry McCloud Bethune. Bethune wanted the Upstart Women's Auxiliary Army Corps to get a facility in Daytona Beach. She had the president's ear. Despite the army's resistance, WAC recruits, we can rightly call them the Bethune Brigade, trained here. The army didn't give the WAC soldiers proper facilities. They did their basic all over Daytona Beach out in public, because the army wouldn't, the city built what's now the City Island Recreation Center for them. Now it might be demolished. This would be a missed opportunity. Daytona Beach can use this building and pot as a National WAC Historical Preservation and Education Center to remember the past and inspire the future. Daytona Beach could set up markers at the sites where the WACs did their basic. Visitors could enjoy the WAC march, a self-guided walking tour from the marker to the marker, starting at the center to learn more about soldiers. Women are the fastest-growing demographic in the military. The state's Veterans Department say women are the fastest-growing veteran population in the Sunshine State. Daytona Beach has a treasurable part in the proud history of woman service members. Military history tourism is a thing. Some of the earliest predecessors of the SEALs trained at Fort Pierce for a short time in World War II. For decades, it was a forgotten part of Fort Pierce's history, until the National Navy UDT SEAL Museum opened in 1985. Now that brief part of the city's history is a centerpiece of its identity. Thousands travel to see the museum annually. After seeing its success, other cities have tried their damnedest to rip the museum entitled "Birthplace of the SEALs" away from Fort Pierce. What could the City Island Rec Center become, and how far would folk travels to see it? Please consider your vote carefully.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina, and on deck is Sharon Weatherholtz.
My name is Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive, Daytona Beach. Coming from a family whose members have served in our military since the Revolutionary War, I would love to know how many of you are veterans? How many of you personally knew a woman who had been a WAC in World War II? How many of you have known any women who have served in the military? And how many of those women were treated with less than the dignity and the appreciation their service to America deserved? Let me tell you about my friend Barbie Wilder. She was from Orlando. She ferried bombers stateside from the manufacturer to the fields where the male pilots would then fly them to the front. The women pilots had to be pilots before they were accepted into the WACs. When they were no longer needed, they had to find their own way home. The military didn't send them home. The 38 who died in service did not get military funerals. They were not acknowledged until the 70s, when the US Air Force tried to say that the new inductees would be the first women military pilots. My friend was too ill in the 90s to go to Washington DC when they were finally recognized, and these women were given Congressional Medals. These were the original Fly Girls from 1943. The military treated them poorly. They were also treated by their male counterparts and private citizens here poorly. That building was erected to give women serving here a little recreation and a little dignity far away from home. The Rec Center would be important to Barbie if she were alive today. If you tear it down, who will remember her sister WACs? Well, how will future generations know about them? In my years as a Realtor, I have been seeing instances where a tree in the way of development unfortunately died and had to be removed, or a structure that was in the way unfortunately was accidentally demolished. I can be a bit cynical. You all have a responsibility as regards to the maintenance of city property. For years, the Rec Center has been the subject of benign or willful neglect. There is still no tarp on the roof, even though a month ago Ruth let you know that it had a leak. Several years ago, we were told we couldn't go inside because it was in such poor shape that the floors might collapse or the ceiling might fall on us. The photos the traders, traders took on a recent tour refutes that report y'all commissioned several years ago. Their inspection also refutes the dollar amount suggested billable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Weatherholtz, and on deck is Vern Weatherholtz.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Weatherholtz. I live at 3 Granville Circle. I got involved with this veterans group, and I've heard these ladies talk about history of the women in this, in this community, and it would be really nice that Daytona take this opportunity to thank them. The other thing that we don't have in my neighborhood is a senior city, senior center. I'm 75. I, I gotta, I gotta, you know, look forward to having a community area to go to and to join my fellow senior citizens. And I think Daytona has an opportunity here to welcome not only their past, but invite their future. And I, I'm willing to take up a broom and a paintbrush, and I think my community is too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vern Weatherholtz, and on deck is Joseph Fetter.
Do I get the remainder of her time? My name is Vern Weatherholtz. I live at 3 Granville Circle. I was at the meeting at the Historical Society to start off with, and I learned a lot of history that I wasn't aware of. I've been aware of the building, and I think it would be a shame to tear it down to start off with. First of all, I'm a licensed Florida general contractor with over 40-some years of experience rehabbing housing. I do have the two proposals that the contractors gave in September. I believe, in my opinion, my contractor's opinion, that these estimates are high. It could be done at a lower rate. Another thing, I thank Warren for the pictures that I received, and I also thank Commissioner Strickland for doing this, taking on its time and his, his video expertise. But you know, it would be, you know, I was surprised with the city. I'll be truthful with you, and I'm gonna address the city manager of this. Surprised that it, that the city was notified that their roof had a hole in it, and it's some means of, of to stop the leak or to repair it. I know the city has tables stored in there, there's boxes in there. I assume it has city documentation, and the neglect of the, the city's part of preserving this building, you know, even if it was minimal, and there wasn't minimal taken. So I was surprised at that. But I think that this can be saved. I think the article in the paper
of the women in this community. And it would be really nice that Daytona take this opportunity to thank them. The other thing that we don't have in my neighborhood is a senior center. I'm 75. I gotta, you know, look forward to having a community area to go to and to join my fellow senior citizens. And I think Daytona has an opportunity here to welcome not only their past, but invite their future. And I'm willing to take up a broom and a paintbrush, and I think my community is too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vern Weatherholtz, and on deck is Joseph Vetter.
Do I get the remainder of her time? No. My name is Vern Weatherholtz. I live at 3 Granville Circle. I was at the meeting at the Historical Society to start off with, and I learned a lot of history that I wasn't aware of. I've been aware of the building, and I think it would be a shame to tear it down to start off with. First of all, I'm a licensed Florida general contractor with over 40-some years of experience rehabbing housing. I do have the two proposals that the contractors gave in September. I believe, in my opinion, my contractor's opinion, that these estimates are high. It could be done at a lower rate. Another thing, I thank Warren for the pictures that I received, and I also thank Commissioner Strickland for doing this, taking on its time and his video expertise. But, you know, I was surprised with the city. I'll be truthful with you. And I'm going to address the city manager of this. Surprised that the city was notified that their roof had a hole in it, and it's some means of to stop the leak or to repair it. I know the city has tables stored in there. There's boxes in there. I assume it has city documentation. And the neglect of the city's part of preserving this building, you know, even if it was minimal and there wasn't minimal taken, I was surprised at that. But I think that this can be saved. I think the article in the paper today, it gave an estimation of the person that gave the article, and it said $2 million. You know, I kind of wonder where that came from and how that trends about and what expertise, you know, whoever gave the amount. But I think it should be saved. I think the history of Daytona Beach, military history, we've got a fabulous bridge, we've got a great ballpark there. I'm a silver slugger, by the way. And I think that this would fit in right with what the city has planned in the future. It could also be used for a recreation center. We have nothing on beachside community, and so this could be utilized for a number of things. And, of course, I'm a lot younger, but maybe in a few years I'll need it too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Vetter, and on deck is Amy Pile.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Vetter, 1530 Moravia Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. I have been a resident of Volusia County for almost 30 years. I have taught American history in our school system in Volusia for 22 years to thousands of students of adjunct at Daytona State College on behalf of Florida History. I serve, although I'm here tonight as a citizen of Daytona, I do serve in the Historic Preservation Board on the east side. I serve on the west side of the county as the Vice President of the Land Historic Trust. And I'm here tonight as a citizen to beg you to preserve this building. You know, we can demolish things. There's an old song, some of you might remember this. Oh, it always seems to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone. Paved paradise to put up a parking lot. One of the things I'm concerned about is if with demolition, there's no plan but a parking lot. There's plenty of parking, as we well know, all around the city downtown. Taking down a historic building like this, which is the legacy, by the way, of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune and the history that we heard tonight, Franklin Don Roosevelt, Eleanor, the connection with Daytona Beach, it's remarkable. I believe that this site, in the situation in the place it's in right now, will complement not only the Veterans Memorial Park that's under construction, it will complement the Veterans Memorial Bridge that we just spent millions of dollars over the last few years. It will complement the Veterans Museum and Education Center that's just going to be re-coercating at the Carnegie Young Library that I'm also a volunteer of, that organization. What an amazing, just cluster destination for historical tourists, for the citizens of this county. I encourage you to designate it as a historic site so that we can move on. We know that these estimates were overblown. I agree with the gentleman, $2 million. I saw many people come up volunteering their time. I saw that there could be a lot less spent to renovate this building. On behalf of the over 3,000 students that I've educated in this community to love Florida history and the place that they're from, on behalf of the unique citizens of this incredible county and this Daytona Beach, how unique this is, on behalf of the WACs that came here by the thousands, 15,000 plus, to put Daytona from a little sleepy village to a bustling metropolis during World War II, on behalf of the legacy of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, I beg you to preserve. For witness, 80th anniversary in 2023 of this building reopening on New Year's Day 2023. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Amy Pile, and on deck is Stephen Poe.
That was a hard act to follow. I'm Amy Pile. I live at 136 South Granville Avenue. History involves telling stories. This building tells a story, like an elder or a grandparent would, and there can never be too many stories, in my opinion. Once a building or a grandparent is gone, there is no replacing them, and anything after just can't compare. So let's save this building, save the Recreation Center. My home was built in 1918, or on some documents it says 1913. The Chisholm years were tough on the beachside, and many older buildings languished and fell apart, and many contributing structures to the Surfside Village Historic District are no longer with us. My house was one that may not have lasted another 10 years in the condition that it was in. I also purchased an adjacent property with some old cottages built in 1920. Same story, the owner could barely keep them together, and they would have been bulldozed or might have been bulldozed for the property value alone if somebody hadn't decided to rescue them. It's been arduous work and a great expense, but I'm very proud of reviving them, and I dare say my neighbors appreciate it too. And that's how I think the city should feel about this building. I think we should restore all of our old buildings wherever they are in the city. Unless it's absolutely crumbling, I think the work should, you know, it's worth it. The term benign neglect has been thrown around. Nobody likes to point fingers, I understand, but how do you justify ignoring a city-owned building in such disrepair while at the same time citing and fining thousands of other property owners for the conditions of their buildings? It's not right. Forcing them to find a way to repair or sell so someone else might do it. In my mind, making this building go away does not absolve anyone of that responsibility. The fact is that the fact that the Rec Center is a boxy, ordinary building makes it much easier to renovate, which should keep relative costs for the space low. It's hard for me to look at the pictures or watch a video of the inside now and not see it in my mind alive with music, with perhaps a senior wedding or a retirement party happening in the ballroom. Maybe even some young people would enjoy it. My father was in the Army only at the very end of the war because he was too young to enlist earlier. He wanted to, but his mother wouldn't sign the papers. He and his friends couldn't wait to get to work, ending the Nazi regime. No, he was not a WAC. But the US military in World War II was brave and determined. This Rec Center was built for our heroes because they were willing to risk everything to save the world. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Poe, and on deck is William Chapin.
Stephen Poe, 138 South Noble Street. So I understand that any decision requires a cost-benefit analysis, but I propose that the connections to important parts of our history are priceless. So I ask you to please save the Rec Center, and thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is William Chapin, and on deck is Ann Marie Serofsky, I believe.
Serofsky.
Okay.
I'm William Chapin, architect, 444 Seabreeze Boulevard. And I'll start by saying, four and a half years ago, the Veterans Museum lost its lease and we're looking for a place to go to set up their new 6,000-square-foot museum. The Rec Center became our first goal because it was perfect for what we wanted to do. We wanted to be a ground zero in downtown Daytona. We wanted a building that was going to be the size and shape and configuration that we needed, and so I went about the chore of looking into its appropriateness. One of the first things I did was I saw the cosmetic pictures of the ugliness inside. It's pretty grim. But more importantly, I went to a study commissioned by the city from John Simcoe, a well-known engineer here, and in this 50-page study, he included about 25 pictures of the structure, not the cosmetics, the structure, the trusses, the floor structures, and so forth. 60 years ago, they built buildings with bolts and big conventional timber, and this thing is built like a rock. I mean, it's not a surprise that it shrugged off 60 years of hurricanes and serious benign neglect by an irresponsible parent. So after looking at it, we felt, boy, this would be great. We would love to have this thing, but, you know, history goes forward, and we couldn't get it. But now here we are again. We got another chance, and I think this is a wonderful thing. And I know that if we were interested in doing this thing, and I might say that I had budgeted maybe $250,000 five years ago to undo the cosmetics and to ensure that the east end was solid again. So the numbers I've heard, of course, are created by people who want those numbers to speak for them in any way they want to here. So what I'm saying is, this building is an absolute gem. It is solid as a rock. It's in the perfect location. You couldn't replace it for $3 million, and I think it could be a wonderful resource for the cities, the citizens of our town, and for visitors and other people who will be glad to come and see it. So I very much hope that you will shine on this building and send this lady back to work. And I certainly hope your hair comes back, Mr. Secher.
So our next speaker is Ann Marie Serofsky, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Good evening, council and staff. I just, everything has already been said by everyone pretty succinctly, all the various points about the structure, the location, the history, and the relevance regarding the building in relationship to the bridge, to the proposed plaza and park you're going to be building. It all ties together so succinctly, and it really would be a lovely asset for Daytona Beach. It's the size of the building, too. Well, let me go back. I want to talk about the structure itself and the time period it was built, and the fact, as the gentleman Prior said, that the lumber that was used, the actual configuration and how it was put together is so different than how we build things today. My home, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you where I live. I live in Holly Hill in the historic area. My home is 100 years old this year. It's built like a rock. Do you all remember when Charlie came through, Hurricane Charlie? You couldn't even hear it on the inside of my house. That's how structurally sound my bungalow is. But at any rate, I see this building as the perfect size to help Daytona have gatherings, events, and get-togethers. It's relevant to smaller events. Not only can it be a museum, but, I mean, the size is perfect for smaller meetings and venues, and it would be terrible to let it go. It really would. And again, I hope you will, if you weren't parents to it at once, one time, I hope you'll be grandparents to it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is William Bidoroff.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. As was previously stated, almost everybody that's been up here has told quite the story. It's been quite unanimous in how we feel. I live just a few blocks from this building and drive by it every single day, and thank God, the exterior still looks halfway decent except for the boards. But the interior, and I live in a historic area, and I could tell you what the lady just said here, they were built differently back then. It is worth saving. Anything you would replace it with could never match up to it. And the history, as was stated, once it's gone, it's gone forever, forever. I'm a proud veteran who served in the later war, in a time when it wasn't very popular. But I served, my mother served as an aviation enemy aircraft spotter during World War II. And I contest, being in the Air Force, that women did not get the respect, as was stated here. This is an opportunity to give them some of that respect. And after hearing some of the history, which has been squelched over these years, and the other gentleman who talked about all the history in Volusia County, it is imperative that we save this center for the respect of the women that served, for the community. It's in, as was stated, the ideal location. You've got a historic fire station right there, you've got a historic ballpark, you've got a historic memorial, Veterans Bridge, and hopefully soon, our park, which we've been waiting for for six years and nothing's happened yet. And, of course, the Veterans Museum, which I'm also involved in, and I'm really looking forward to that. So you've got a complete center. And as a reminder, one of the largest veteran communities, and I know Commissioner Cantu knows this, I'm a member of the Vietnam Veterans Group. We're the second-largest in the state, and the only reason we're second is because of the villages. But we have a lot of veterans here. Veterans are the lifeblood of this community in addition to the tourists that come here. There's a lot to be learned. The history of Dr. McLeod Bethune and her involvement in this also can be tied in with the rest of the community. It's imperative that we save this building. I yield back the rest of my time.
Our next speaker is William Bidoroff, and on deck is Kelly White.
My name is William Bidoroff. I live at 402 East International Speedway Boulevard. I think it's all answers, a very big part of our history here. When I was younger, I don't want to say how old I am, because I am getting older now, but I did kempo in that building as a child, under a guy named Grandmaster Pie, for years, for years. And I became a seventh-degree blackpaw. That tells you I'm pretty freaking old, but please save this building. And I know that when I look at all of you, I feel like I've grown up with some of you, you know, and please, we need you. We need all of you. This community needs you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly White, and on deck is Kimberly Vedder.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. My address is 415 South Palmetto, and I just want to make three quick points. First of all, I will respect you all, no matter what you choose to do, but I'm here because, as you remember, a couple years ago, we talked about this building in the context of recreational trails, and there is a City Island Loop spur that comes off of the Sweetheart Trail that was designed for this area. So if you do demolish it, I would just ask you that you revisit those plans. I think they were almost complete. If you don't demolish it, I'm sure there's still a way to locate that trail. I think right now you have a six-foot, maybe, sidewalk. It's a little bit tilted when you ride your bike on it. Don't do it with a small child. They may fall into traffic. Not that that's happened to me, but just whatever you decide to do, I'm just here really to advocate for that City Island Loop. Second point is that loop needs to be underneath the Orange Avenue Bridge, and I know that's a county-city issue, but I just use this as an opportunity to bring that up. And the last thing is, I've heard a lot of really interesting stories that very much tie into the narrative of the Sweetheart Trail, because you remember the Sweetheart was Charles Burgoyne's boat. We talked a lot about waterfront history. The trail goes by the Boat Works, which was a big building site for all of the World War II boats. The trail also goes up through Bethune Point, which was a camp for the WACs. So either way you decide, I just kind of bring that to light, that I still love to see that project completed, and I hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Vedder, and on deck is Nancy Long.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kimberly Vedder. I live at 1530 Moravia Avenue. I think this is a very exciting opportunity for the city. This building had the support of President Theodore Roosevelt and the heart of Mary McLeod Bethune. The purpose of this building, it was built for the use of thousands of women's Army Corps members. As a teacher, I believe that it's very important to preserve history. In addition, it's very important to teach about this history and to share this history with future generations. They should know why this building was built, what it represents. How will future generations learn about the rich, beautiful, and unique building that stands there today if we demolish it? I was so saddened and shocked by the disrepair that the building has fallen into from the video that we saw tonight. I actually come from a family of veterans. My grandfather was in the My grandfather was in the Corps of Defense, flew in World War II, and I'm glad that their history was preserved. I've had many veterans, as well as Holocaust survivors, come and speak to my students in my classrooms. I'm glad that their history was preserved. I encourage you to designate this building as a historic site. I think it's very exciting, the possibility of it being used by veterans, senior citizens, for educational purposes, as well as private functions. But we have a wonderful and unique opportunity to make something great right here in our city and share it with future generations. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Long, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Okay, hi. I'm Nancy Long. My address, 1967 Red Cedar Circle, South Daytona. I have been a historic preservationist for many years. I and my fellow preservationists truly, truly want to see this building saved. It's an important part of history, and I know the city has many great grant writers, so money should not be an issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Pierre Lewis.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. A couple of things. One, the city had dozens, literally dozens of sites connected to World War II. Not many of them still exist. This is one of them. Two, right next door to this building is a building that was condemned. The Parks and Recreation were in that building, and they had to eliminate, get out of that building quickly, within a week, because it was condemned. The city rehabbed it, and it's now the Tortugas location. That was a condemned building that could not stand. All right? This is a building that cannot stand? The Tortuga Building could not stand? That tarp is there. But the tarp sits on the corner. And if you looked at the video, if you watched when Ken walked through, only 5% of this building is damaged severely. Only 5%. One little corner in the back is damaged that needs extensive repair. Everything else is minor. Give me a couple of Boy Scouts, and we'll eliminate all that garbage that's in the building. All right? There are three sets of videos, three sets of photographs, all right? A city photographer took some, Warren took some, and they're totally different. Stacy went, and she took some. And she took most of hers in that one section of the building. All right? So when you look at the whole thing, the whole building per se is in relatively good condition. It's well structured. It's the only downtown building that we have for recreation. We don't have any. We don't have any major buildings to do that. Midtown's got three. B-Side's got one. Downtown will have none if you tear this down. Last thing, the WAC. I never knew. I'm a history major. I taught history. Two years, taught math, 20. But the WAC, believe it or not, was an issue never brought up. Women's issues were never brought up. When I was a kid, my mother wanted to buy a piece of property, and she couldn't because my father wouldn't sign. Men had total control over women in the day, and most women today don't know that. There's a lot of history that women don't know about themselves. After the meeting, we were down in the front of the building talking, and they're like, "No, we didn't know that. We didn't know that." So this is an opportunity, not only to honor the WAC, honor the historical building, but to educate on what women have done in the past. We do it about almost everything else. It's about time we do it for our women. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pierre Lewis, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Good evening to the mayor and to the commission. Pierre Lewis, 130 South Franklin Street, United States Marine Corps retired officer. I spent 30 years in the Marine Corps, I'll be brief, and you can fill in that 30 years of what I've done for the service. However, I'm here today because, like my colleague that was here, I was one of the original board members on the Tomstead Veterans Memorial Bridge. When we constructed that bridge, all of the plaques that you will see that's going across east, and the other plaques that are going across to the west that's coming to the other side, there are zero plaques that talk about WAC. Absolutely zero, of all those monuments that are there. And in our vision, when we were talking about the plaza itself and also the bridge, we talked about veterans' events that would be conducted there. Also, if you're doing Tuskegee, we've got the Vietnam Veterans Statue that's there. That's supposed to be eventually brought back to where the plaza is there. Our vision was this would be kind of a tie-in. That would be sort of a veterans' way. The Veterans Plaza would be there, the Vietnam Veterans Monument that we have at Tuskegee Park would be there. We thought that the Veterans Museum would eventually go there, but we can see what happened with that. Now, I'm not going to sit here and talk to you about things you could probably Google. I can just tell you things that I know that we dealt with and we talked with on the board. I think it's, I'm here to support the measure. I don't know all the specifics of it, but I think that this monument right here, to say that something needs to be said or left for the WAC that were there, the Women's Corps of Engineers, I'm sorry, Army Corps that was there, I would think this would be a great asset for them. So I'm here to support it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
My name is Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I've supported the military my entire life. My grandfathers and things were in the military. My stepdad was in the military. He was drafted. I know a lot of veterans in just about every war, especially Special Force Marines. Some of the stories I can't repeat. This building has been there forever. When I first seen it, I knew it had to have something to do with the military, because of the location, because I knew about the other buildings just down south with the military situation there, too. I could tell the building was built strong because they had to. Like the gentleman said, some Marines were all around at that time. In Oran Beach, they had the Lookout Tower. They rebuilt that. That's right there on the beach. Any decision you make, it's okay with me, but I would support rebuilding it. Like several other gentlemen said, the damage is not that extensive. The reason why the bids are high, because there's going to be a lot of eyes watching. There's going to be a lot of disruptions. People are going to want to see how the work is being done. There's going to have to be a lot of insurance on it. It's going to have to be protected when you do, if you do rebuild it. And if it goes with all the regulations and rules, you will not have another building there, because it can't pass that footprint. So the entire reason why I suggest you rebuild it is because of the history. Because if you forget the history of the United States, the younger generation will wonder why we have a military. The military is the only reason why we're all sitting here, and we have freedom. If you believe that, then you're probably an American. So, again, the structure looks strong. I have not even looked at it. I could just tell by looking at it, because I can drive down the street and just tell, being in the building industry my entire life. I have about 43 years. I've been on vacation for a while, just to see who's been doing these things. It's interesting. I did a speech over in the county a while back to double-track what Daytona Beach was doing with the parks and what the county was doing with their parks. And I suggested to make sure to double-check each other. If you read the paper today, Daytona and another town was talking about the parks. Some of theirs have been neglected also, so we're not the only city in Volusia County that's doing that. So I suggest most of us that are here tonight, hearing my voice, go to the county and ask them about their parks, and maybe talk about the other cities, too, because we're not the only one. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. You might not know, but in our land development code, we have information on how you are to look at a building and determine if it is a historic building. And this structure meets several of those criteria. You only have to meet three. First of all, it's a contributing structure in the city-island historic district. Second, it's in a visible location as one of three Spanish colonial revival buildings in a row along the waterfront, the rec, the casino, and the fire hall. And these two, the rec and the casino, were designed by Alan McDonough. The rec designed specifically as a companion to the casino. We believe it's the only dance hall built for the troops in Florida in wartime with federal grant dollars. It has structural integrity despite the neglect. It contains much of the original material, such as pecky cypress and hard pine that can't readily be obtained today. It still has the original ticket window and the original fenestration. The presence of the military trainees, especially the huge presence of the WAC, allowed our city to prosper under wartime conditions that devastated the tourist economy. The revenue generated by their presence allowed the city to prepare for a post-war tourist boom, allowing us to take advantage of those tourists coming south. The National Trust for Historic Preservation defines heritage tourism as traveling to experience the places and activities that authentically represent the stories and people of the past and present. It's one of the fastest-growing segments of travel. In 2018, it was worth $171 billion annually. 81% of U.S. tourists are considered cultural tourists, and 56% of the United States population indicated it included at least one cultural arts historic or heritage activity while on a trip in the past year. Cultural tourists spend 60% more than the average tourist and take slightly more trips than the average tourists. Many of the cultural tourists, a plurality, are affluent and well-educated older adults who tend to prefer leisure travel that's educational. Millennials are a growth market for heritage tourism, and 2/3 of them rated authenticity as extremely important in their travel decisions. And heritage tourism sites are like restaurants. The more you have in an area, the more people are attracted to that area. We have a situation with the bridge, with the Veterans Plaza, with the Tortuga Space, with the ballpark, with the Veterans Museum across the bridge. We can make this into a destination and preserve our heritage at the same time, and I hope that you will do that and save the rec.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Stephen Miller.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. One of the things that's been interesting about discovering the history of the rec is how every time I learn something, I learn something new again. So we first discovered that the rec was actually built by going in 2019 to the library and spending hours sitting on those hard chairs, looking at the microfilm. And that was something that was unknown by the city. City said it was built in 1920s. That's not true. It was built in 1943. Then when we published our little video, we got one comment, and that's when we learned about the investigation of the WAC in Daytona Beach. But it was, actually, it was the investigation by the Army into the city of Daytona Beach, because there were so many horrible rumors being spread about the WACs who were training here. Now, the city started getting the grant funds in March of 1943. I've requested the 80 copies of the original study, but I do know that they took a snapshot in May, a couple of months after. The city had already started looking into developing this. And they found that those rumors were simply not true, and that what was needed were recreational facilities. But the city commission was ahead of them. They were building those recreational facilities. Some of you may have gotten a letter that said, "Well, the WACs weren't in there that long." And that's true. The WACs did leave shortly after this was built. But the intention of the city fathers was that they would be in there, and then it did serve the people who were still serving here. It is a historic asset. And like Ms. Murphy just said, we don't do, well, no, she didn't say that. What she said was that historic tourism pays, and it absolutely does. And what I'm going to say is that we have done a terrible job of exploiting our historic assets for tourism. And we need to start. I love preserving history for the sake of preserving history, but there, it can be an economic engine, and we need to start using it. The presence of this as a restored site with an educational component about the experiences of people in World War II will not detract from the Veterans Museum on the beach side. It will enhance it. It will encourage people to go to it, whether they see this one first or that one first. It will not detract from any other museum that we choose to create about our culture and our heritage. Like Sandy said, it will enhance it. It will give us critical mass. So for that reason, I'm asking, please, just declare it historic tonight. Explore the purpose, define a clear purpose, because you need that, and then look for the funding. It doesn't, it's a possibility. If you tear it down, it would be a very real loss. Thank you. Also, the porch was original to the building. Please read the article, 31st, 1943.
Our final speaker is Stephen Miller.
To the ladies of the city of Daytona Beach, you know, most cities you go to, you talk to the men, but we have ladies that run the house here, under the leadership of Derrick Henry, of course, and of course, Ken. But can you imagine, 350,000 women participated in the World War II fight? It wasn't just men that fought in this war, it was women for the first time. In 1943, the common denominator was a lady by the name of Mary MacLeod Bethune, who's very instrumental to this community. She saw that tourists had gone to pot. There was a war, there was a ration of food and fuel. And she called her friend Eleanor, who told her husband, "Send the whites to Daytona Beach." It had a $5 million impact per month. We were able to build the golf course because of the revenue that came into this area, where most other areas was in bad shape. We had the Navy Air pilots here, and it would be a shame that Mary MacLeod Bethune went out her way to have them to come here, even though the people in her neighborhood wouldn't benefit like the people in this neighborhood. But she knew that it was important that women got a chance to serve. And she also called her friend and said, "Eleanor, could you please have your husband that send the touch gigi boys and allow them to fly and fight in World War II?" And they called themselves the Red Tails. Just read the story. They almost changed the outcome of the war. So it was the first time that this country was integrated. And it didn't happen officially until Truman did it in '48. Daytona Beach was a part of the integration of the military. And wouldn't it be just beautiful for folks to come from all over the country, the world, to see this museum that talks about the whites and the integration of African-Americans into the military? You know what? The chairman of our Historic Preservation Board stated, while she was trying to tell us not to vote for in the past five, the one by "your board." And I like to think that you would listen to it, and everybody here spoke in favor. Not one person said anything against it. That's amazing to me, and I thought that was representative by the people and for the people. And if that's the case, we may just get the building tonight. I hope so. Unless, some people don't listen to their constituents, they do what they want to do. But I like to think that this commission is a very special commission, a very diverse commission. You know what? We have four women on this commission. Five. We're talking about the whites. These are women in the military. They integrated the military. If it's African-American's fault, for the first time that they gave credit for, it would be a disgrace for us not to make this a historic.
Did you fill out a paper? Go ahead and fill one out, just so you can speak and fill it out after.
Thank you.
Your name and your address, please.
Gary Chrysler. I grew up in Orman Beach and the Trails. I no longer live in Volusia County, but we have an office. I work for Train Technologies. We have an office on Clyde Morris Boulevard. I came to make mention that this is a unique opportunity to take a historic building that was, had no technology, and be able to have it be a showcase for what is the most modern technology. You have the opportunity to have a, make this a showcase using groundwater-source heat pumps for cooling, solar on the roof, the most, the best in automated controls, wind technology. You could have a small wind turbine. You could have a small wind turbine on the, on the roof where there's a constant breeze coming off the coast. And there is available, not from our firm, this is not a commercial for Train, but I believe in sustainability in all buildings, old and new, is to be able to have a green screen that in real time lets you folks see the savings for energy for every one of these components. Every time a water, a sink is run or a water closet is flushed, it can calculate the savings. The wind energy will calculate the savings that's offset versus, you know, straight-up electric power. So I hear that this is unanimous support from the community to support this building. But while you do it, let's look at ways to be able to make it a showcase for new technology while it benefits and reminds everybody of what was here 60, 70 years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we have our discussion, I'd like for Percy Williamson to come up and speak to us. He was the Leisure Services Director for many years over this, in this facility, was under his administration. I believe he's in the audience.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Percy, if you'll fill out a form after. Thank you.
Percy Williamson, 180 Pointe Woods Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, member of the City Commission, special recognition to my Commissioner, Commissioner Can too. As I sat back and I listened to what's being said, it swells my breast to hear the wonderful things that have been said. There were a lot of missed opportunities for us to get to this particular point, and it was not because fighting wasn't going on to make sure that things within the Recreation Department wasn't taken care of. But as you're doing right now, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure that you're working on, as the City Manager is, working on the 2023 budget. And we know that that budget is a pie, small pie. And once you set the millies, then you have to go back and figure out how we're gonna fit all these things that need to be done into that budget. That's what happened back in my early tenure. I started with the city as the Director of Leisure Services in 2003, and we did have money in the budget for maintenance and expansion. But unfortunately, a lot of those fights I lost. Over the years, budgets were made, funding was there, but when it came down to it, unfortunately, recreation was one of those areas where it was always cut out. After a number of years, not that we stopped putting it in, but it was a foregone conclusion that it wasn't gonna be allowed. And so I'm happy to hear that there's opportunity for grants, wonderful opportunity for grants. Back then, we weren't even allowed to do that. Now, as time goes on, with all the wonderful things that happened in the Recreation Department, Midtown Cultural and Educational Center, Yvonne Scarlett Golden, Cypress Aquatic Center, Municipal Stadium, all those things have grant funding in it. And there's a lot of things that can be done now that we weren't afforded to do then. We have a wonderful opportunity now to correct an omission that never should have happened. With the connection with Mary McLeod Bethune, of which I'm a legacy of, it's an opportunity for a win-win situation for the city, for the historical perspective, and I certainly agree with what's being said, historical opportunities for tourism within this city. And so I'm fully in favor of it being made historical and for us to correct a wrong that happened years ago.
Someone else? There's another speaker for this item?
No.
No other? Mr. Hunt? All right, we heard from almost 25 people, so we're not gonna stop now. Anyone else? Please fill out your yellow form.
Kenneth Hunt, 250 South Palmetto. I just came to the City Council meeting, but I'm speaking on behalf of a veteran. I'm speaking on behalf of the President of the Historical Museum, speaking on behalf of a citizen involved in the redevelopment, downtown redevelopment, and as a businessperson who is focused on history and tying all of Daytona Beach and the surrounding areas' rich history. And from a business perspective, I may have an average of 200 people that may come through. And as I'm doing that, I'm sharing Daytona Beach and surrounding areas' history. So if the city doesn't want to take charge in preserving it, maybe sell it and support the new owners in creating something as a beacon for the community and the surrounding area. Thank you.
The City Manager's asked, "Did you want to buy?" That's just in, and now you're, now you're grunting, you clapped before, but yes.
So about three years ago, I inquired about purchasing the property, and it was negative feedback. So I passed, and I went in another direction. So, let's talk.
Well, I wasn't aware of that, but before we talk, we have some business to settle tonight. So let's settle this business, and then we'll see where things go. We have honorably done our duty as elected officials and listened to you all, and we have heard what you have had to say tonight. So if you would allow us to now deliberate and make a decision, we'd appreciate that. Does anyone care to commence this discussion?
This is definitely part of our history. Everybody knows I'm a history fanatic. This is a building that has good bones. When I heard about it, when I saw some of the pictures, I walked in expecting that, oh my gosh. I was very happily to see that it is mostly cosmetic that has to be done. It's structurally sound. It's what they call good bones. Once history is destroyed, it is destroyed. Now, we owe it to the WACs. We owe it to Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. We owe it to all of those who came before and who fought. Daytona Beach was, at the start of the war, was nothing. All the tourists left. If it weren't for the military coming here, we would not have the Daytona Beach we have today. Like I said, I was upset when I found out that not even a tarp had been put over that hole. Now, that is disgraceful. We know better as a city. We have places here that we need to maintain. This was what they call benign neglect, purposeful. And we know what we have to do now to save it. It is not going to be that much out of our pocket if we can get these grants, which our city manager managed to mention some of them, but we're also a certified local government city. We can get grants maybe from there. There are endless opportunities. Yes, it might cost us something because some of the grants might be matching grants, but we have done that before. When do you ever get an opportunity to save such a treasure in Daytona Beach? Never, really. And after this, probably, absolutely never.
Mayor.
I cannot stress how important I think it is that we designate this a local historic destination because that makes us eligible for so many other grants. I believe we should save it. I believe that those estimates were much too high, and you had two contractors mention that they thought they were too high also. This is something we need to do for our city, for our people who come after it. They built it especially so that after the war, it could be used by the community. My children went there when they were young for different classes. One mentioned etiquette classes. There were also, up until the time it was closed, there were community meetings of the community. There were dance lessons, there was square dancing. It was an active building until they abruptly closed it down and neglected it. It is our duty, I believe, to save this for the rest of the people coming after us. And I urge all of my fellow commissioners to vote yes. Please have this designated a local historic destination and get on board with renovating it and putting it up to snuff so we can really use it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Can too?
Okay. I think most everyone here knows I'm the biggest veteran advocate around with our veteran museum. I belong to a lot of the military groups, one with peer from the Marine Corps. My father was a Marine Vietnam vet who was killed in Vietnam. My son is 82nd Airborne Iraq veteran. Over 61 family members in my family. I do have women that are serving in my family, actually, right now. One of them is deployed. She's my niece. If you go to Walmart up in Ormond, the Veteran Hall of Fame, 28 of those members are my family members. So I'm the biggest veteran advocate around here. But, and I was having second thoughts with this Rec Center. Yes, I was originally behind it when we wanted it to be the veteran museum, and actually, those board members are very good friends of mine. I have talked to a lot of the veterans around here about this Rec Center as well, and we have had long discussions. The DAV in Holly Hill, you know, that used to be a bunker, and they redid it, but right now, they are, I actually got phone calls. They are looking for grants right now to demolish it and redo it. They own the property. I know I'm gonna make a lot of people unhappy here, and like I said, I was having second thoughts. I went into the building myself on Monday. The building, these, the pictures, the video you're seeing, it is in really bad shape. And a lot of that, I thought, was wood. Actually, it's panel. After I left there, I have asthma really bad, I had a sore throat all night long, the smell, I mean, I could not get out from stop smelling it. The next day, I had a sore throat, and I thought, oh, gosh, I'm coming down with something. It was in that building. The dance floor has white mold spores all over it. I know I'm not always gonna agree with everyone, but I do have a lot of people in my zone who doesn't want to repair it as well. So I'm gonna have to say no on this. I don't believe it should be salvaged. It's sad, it's a shame that it was not taken care of, but you can't always save history. And Ms. White, I've never met her, actually, so I just want the public to know. I mean, actually, we met one time, we talked. I did not know what she wanted it for, the Trails, so I want the public to know. I don't know anything about that. So I will have to be a no. There is way, way too much work. I mean, I could see actually building a new building cheaper than what the money you would put into that building.
Let's maintain the quorum, whether you agree or disagree, that we expect from you. Commissioner Henry?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be supporting this tonight. The, I'm gonna be supporting my other fellow commissioners across the aisle. I think that this is something that we should at least, at minimum, look a little further into. Now, I began, after researching, after meeting with some of the constituents and after researching, I began to see the rich history in this building, as far as the WACs, as far as Dr. Bethune. And I'm gonna say something, and it may not be as popular with some of the men, but because of sexism and patriarchy, I don't believe that women get the respect that they deserve and the honor that they deserve from serving in our armed forces. They haven't gotten them in the past. We certainly know they didn't get them in the past, and we know that they don't get them. I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to kind of write that, for us to play a part in history and in doing a better part in honoring those women. I mean, these are women who are away from their families, away from their children, who have served, and I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for us to honor those women. And keeping in mind that tonight, we're not here to decide whether we're gonna sink $2 million into this building. That's not what we're here for tonight. The only thing that we're trying to decide tonight is if we should make it a historic building. And I think that we can meet our constituents in the middle because they are not asking us to sink $2 million into the building. They're saying, "Let's get the opportunity to work and see what grants and what funds we can come up with." And the people that I've spoken with have understand that I'm not behind sinking $2 million into the building, but I am behind giving you additional time and opportunities to see if fundraising or grants and whatever else can be done to save this particular building. Now, the building is in disrepair. I toured it this morning, and even, and I'm sitting here and I'm thinking, even just six years ago when I joined this commission, if I would have known then what could be today as far as what we would have to put into fixing the building. So, being bad parents, yeah, there's truth at the heart of that. There's truth at the heart of that. But tonight, we are only here to decide if we can make this a historic building. And after talking to the city attorney today, he did say that we can un-elect to do that. Am I correct? Did you?
And I want to talk a little bit about process, but this is essentially a zoning decision tonight, so yes, you are entitled to declare zoning on the site.
Okay. So I hope that one more person would stand with us tonight and just giving our citizens the opportunity. I mean, it's been there this long in disrepair, what's another year or two? Another year or two is not going to hurt us at all. And then we even have a person that said, "Let's talk about even buying the building." So there are options, and I think that we should take some time to explore those options, and our people aren't asking for too much. We can meet them in the middle on this. And so I'm hoping that somebody else up here will join the three of us in meeting them in the middle. Thank you.
Mayor, could we have features explain that? Are we just designated for historical? Because I asked the same question, and I was told a little different answer.
Yeah. No, the question is, if you don't vote to designate the local designation, the step will be to demolish it. will be to demolish it.
Yeah, that's the real issue. We determined tonight whether we want to designate it. If we determine that we don't want to designate it, then the only practical question next is, what do you do with it? And the logical thing is that you would demolish it. So those are questions we have, and that's why we're here.
And if the motion, Tish just told me, Commissioner Trager made a motion to designate it as a historic designation. But if that doesn't go forward, the option is to demolish it.
And what about if we designate it as a historical and it comes back? Yeah, if we don't get the money?
Yeah, we have to get to that, but that's a decision. Then we still have a decision to make. And I was going to try to highlight that in my narrative or synopsis. But give us a decision, okay, to be made. Okay.
Commissioner? Commissioner Trager's motion was to designate and repair.
You may not win that. So, you know, you may want to amend that motion. And I don't know if you got, if you got four, that's what you want to hold on to, but I'm going to admonish you, from my perspective, to go a different route. But if you got four, I don't believe you have that.
Mayor, if I might step in, there are some process issues we need to work through. We can't really handle all of that in the way that it's been presented. So let's first talk about the process for declaring the site historic, which was part of your motion, Commissioner. So this is, as I said, is a zoning decision. Under your code, Ms. Murphy mentioned, you know, some of the standards for declaring a site historic. Your motion tonight is, in effect, a motion to seek application for the designation. Your zoning process requires you to go back through the historic board to approve the application with the recommendation, go to the redevelopment board, and then to the planning board, and then back to the commission for the final determination on the zoning designation as a historic structure, which then, you know, gives it all the attributes of an historic structure, you know, your right to grants, protections for demolitions and improvements. It all has to be consistent.
But the historic board already decided that they want to have it designated as a local historic destination?
I understand that, but pursuant to your code, there has to be an application from the owner that then goes to the historic board for the recommendation. So there is a process for declaring a site as a historic building or structure. So that is, in essence, the process that needs to be gone through here. Now, if the motion is approved, the second part of your motion was to do the repairs. Now, all those repairs have to come back to the commission as well because those are going to be above the city manager's authority, obviously, $2 million to do. So that's got to come back. We've got to approve those contracts. So you can't simply say, let's do the repairs tonight because you've got a purchasing code that you've got to comply with, and you'd have to approve each of those contracts for the remodeling.
Okay, then can we have a designated local historic designation and look for grant opportunities?
You need to go through the process in your zoning code to have it declared a historic structure through a zoning overlay.
Okay. Then after this, what happens if we say yes?
If your motion is amended, to have the site declared as a historic structure, it's in essence, a motion to seek application or to submit an application to the various boards for approval.
Then who submits the application? The city?
Staff would do that, the city, yes.
And then it comes back again to, it goes to the Historic Preservation Board?
Yes. So my recommendation would be to amend the motion for the city to apply for the historic overlay designation for this building.
Yeah.
We need, so we decided that if we decide we want to have the city to put in an application, it's already contributing structure.
There's a standard in your code which you need to follow in making that determination. And staff needs to weigh in on that, and all of your redevelopment, all of your advisory boards need to weigh in as well with the recommendation. And that's just what's required in the code.
Yeah.
If it has to be that way, it has to be that way.
That is what I would recommend. Otherwise, I don't think you're going to be successful tonight.
I will amend it.
Can we ask for an amended motion, or do you need to speak before she amends her motion?
Once it gets the moving forward process of the designation, or does it protect it at that point from demolition? Does it afford it any kind of protection?
We have to decide.
Any demolition you all have to, has come before.
So even though it's recognized as being historic, receives the designation, the local designation, we can still elect to demolish it? Is that correct?
Well, in order to demolish a historic structure, it has to go back through the historic board for a recommendation, then come back to the city commission again for approval of contract, et cetera.
So it's coming back before us?
No matter what.
No matter what. Then I don't mind designating it a historical. I'm just not going to say, because we don't know how much it's going to cost, right?
It's not going to happen.
Okay.
Can you, before we have further discussion, so that we're discussing the proper motion, could you please allow her to amend her motion? No further discussion without that.
I amend my motion to have the city commission designate City Island Recreation Center as a local historic designation.
Do we have a second to that?
I second it.
Of a motion, and we have a second. Now, we can discuss that item and that item alone. Okay? And that doesn't mean you don't bring other things up that you may want to do later. But go ahead. Do you have other questions, ma'am?
So I have one dealing with, I need some history, a little history. We have a Black Heritage Trail that we're trying to promote as well, correct? Would this fall in line with the Black Heritage Trail? Could we incorporate it into the Black Heritage, number one? Well, it's number one. It's a question I have. The next question I have is, the Thurman House, have we, are we getting enough? I see the energy and the enthusiasm with regard to grant funding and protecting, preserving, and restoring City Island Rec Center. Do we have the same, I mean, do we have the same kind of force for the Thurman House? Because if I had to spend money, I'm going to try to spend my money in the Thurman House because we have something going. It's international acclaim, et cetera. So I'm curious, do we have the same kind of grant access for that?
We have, you want to answer?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm on the board of the Thurman House, and there are properties that the city is considering for a plan that has been presented to them that is going to make that area flourish. And we're excited about that. I know the manager is on board with that. So yes, there is a driving force in regards to doing something at the Thurman House.
I will be meeting with members of the Thurman Board. There are properties adjacent to that. They have provided me with the concept of what they want to do. I've toured the facility, talked with the individuals that are in charge of it, discussed and did research in reference to Dr. Thurman's information that's at Boston University. We have properties adjacent to it. Our redevelopment staff have determined that the best course for the properties right adjacent to the Howard Thurman House should be presented to the commissioners as a donation, and that if they were wanting to do anything with those vacant lots, that they will come back to the city. But I think that what the Howard Thurman Board, and actually, the executive director, and Percy Williams is here, what they want to do as far as community festivals, working with the schools of religion, working with Boston University, bringing these students down here to do research on Howard Thurman's life, will be beneficial, and we will be bringing that recommendation back to the city commission soon to discuss how we can transfer.
So that property is eligible, it's got local historic designation, correct? Okay. Super. And then also, Jackie Robinson Ballpark has the same local historic designation, correct? That the City Island?
Thing is, this whole conversation has made the Redevelopment and Development Services team look at all of our facilities.
Right, right.
Can be potential historic. So we wanted to get beyond this, and then the staff will bring back proposals to the commission.
So the reason I ask this is that we have structures here that are, that have been here for a long time, that have not had the designation, have not had that type of attention that we're putting on City Island Rec Center. So I guess my thought would be, I mean, at the same time, why don't we also take a look at some of our Black Heritage Trail facilities and some of our other historic designations and do it all at one time? And then from that point, we can make a decision in terms of funding, how and where we spend money. That'll be an interesting position for me. I also went ahead and asked people in Zone 3, I literally went door to door, and the question that came up all the time was the cost. They couldn't get over the price tag. That was the hard part. And even though it's a difficult thing to say, I said, are you sure about this? I mean, think about City Island Rec Center. I've rented City Island Rec Center. I help support some of the dance programs at City Island Rec Center. But there are residents, there are 25 here, but there are also 25 who aren't here, who are concerned about the price tag. But my interest would be, and if we're going to spend money on preserving something, I would like to take a look at how we can incorporate this into the historic Black Heritage Trail, if it's possible, or if we're going to spend money, expended money on some of the facilities. And I have to ask the question, I kind of don't want to ask the question, but I'm such a curious bird. Here it is. So in the '40s, Daytona Beach was desegregated. It was still segregated, correct? Where were the black female officers and cadets and women trainees auxiliary? Were they all sharing the same City Island? Were they allowed to go to City Island Rec Center? Where were they housed?
They didn't exist. They, yeah, they were not here in Daytona Beach, I'll say that.
So this was a, so this was a whites-only facility? Is that what it was?
Well, the historian of this facility, and I don't think we should engage the audience in the discussion.
Okay. That's fine. It was a curiosity of mine in terms of kind of where different people were housed at that particular time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Can we continue to maintain our decorum? We haven't approached our time limit, whatever that is. We're on Bud Asher time tonight. Commissioner Strickland?
Could you define Bud Asher time for me before I start?
Bud Asher time is an unlimited meeting. During the Bud Asher administration, meetings would last until the wee hours of the night. And so that's the time that we're on tonight. We didn't, we didn't put a limit on anyone's time out there, so we're not going to have a limit. Okay?
I brought my own snacks, just in case. Anyway, I was under the impression, from what I had been told, the few pictures I had looked at, that once I walked into that building, it was full of mold, it was falling in everywhere, and I was shocked at how good a shape that building's in. It does have some bad spots in the floor, it's got a hole in the roof. There are some places in there that are really bad. From what I saw, the white across the floor was just the varnish being old and turning white. It was not mold. I have severe hay fever. I had no mask on when I was in there today. I haven't sneezed one time today. I have no headache. I don't feel bad. The other thing that I saw was that floor, I thought, well, how sturdy is this floor? If you've ever stood in your driveway and jumped up in the air and landed on concrete, that's how sturdy that floor is. If we demolish it, we may have to pay extra to tear the floor up because it is that solid, that sturdy. There's no reason that that building can't be put back the way it should have been kept all these years. I'm not sure what it would cost, but I don't think that if we use grant funds and don't use general funds, that it should be a problem to put it back to what it should have been kept at. And at some point, and I know it's been said, well, we can start with the next historic building. I say we start with this one tonight to move forward, see if we can get the grants, don't use any taxpayer money. Well, grants are taxpayer money, some of them are anyway, but still, you know, it won't come right out of our general fund, and let's preserve this building and use it for good purpose rather than just erasing it from memory like it was never there. And, you know, we do have the bridge. We, you know, we have a museum on Beet Street. We're going to have the park under the bridge. This would be a great asset to that, a great addition, and I don't see why we shouldn't pursue it because we've got the bones there. Some people have been saying, let's use some grant money and fix this thing and make it what it should have been kept at.
Good God, Ken. Commissioner Strickland, I will have to disagree. I got down there, that is mold.
Any other comments? And I think we've heard from all commissioners except for Mr. Reed.
I'm going to say something that others might not say. When Ann Ruby came to the mic, she said, she used one word that just stuck with me. It's a two-letter word. The word was "we." We, W-E. Because, you see, not only was it our responsibility for this building, but this is the citizens' building. And I applaud you for coming out tonight. Perhaps if you'd done this sooner, we wouldn't be here. We have to collectively stand for what's right. We can't allow one person to be, to administrate their thoughts and it rule what's done. So you coming out tonight and letting us know how you feel about this, we meet every first and third Wednesday. I hope to see you again. I, in my role as the president of the Volusia League of Cities, the manager can agree with this. In my speech, I said, this is the year of the woman. And that's my platform for the year of this presidency. And I toured the facility on yesterday, and yes, I saw everything that everybody else saw. But tonight, as Commissioner Henry has said, we're only looking at the designation. Anything else will be something that we'll address at another time. So I am willing to support this this evening. Can you count to four?
I can easily count it. Well, I don't know if it's always easy. It's not always easy to get to four, but we, and that's why it's taking its time. Let me say this, and there's a lot, can you please stop? Thank you. This has been, and Commissioner Reed has said much of what I am going to say, but first thing I want to say is that you all really did come up in your discussion with a lot of unique reasons, you know? And that was, to me, really refreshing. Because usually, when you get an issue, you got one pony, you got two ponies, and you got three ponies at the most. But you all had good 20 ponies. And they were strong, you know, ponies, you know? And the telling thing tonight for me is that, well, I know there's opposition. I know that. But the reality is that the opposition is not here. And, you know, sometimes it's the loudest bird that gets your attention. But not only is the bird tonight, you know, noisy and, well, chirpy, I will say. Chirpy, and, you know, I like a good chirp. But it's a chirping bird that I believe is resonating with sense. It's a sensible bird. And so I would also say that tonight, it's beautiful to me when your residents come out and they feel passionately about something. You know, passion is important. And, you know, you don't always have to, even if the majority goes against passion... goes against passion, sometimes passion. I applaud you all for your passion, your citizenship, and for, you know, showing up and rallying behind what you believe in. And what I would like to say is that we don't ever want to be an elected body that doesn't listen. But as a person, I would also say that, you know, I have a lot of problems with the building. And I've highlighted those before. I don't particularly personally like the building. Don't like the use of the building or the amount of use that the building has gotten. But all of those, all of the things that I am apprehensive about, if you have this sort of energy, you know, for preserving the building, a part of my commentary here is to say, let's find that same energy to find a use for the building that resonates in the community and with our city. Because for me, at the end of the day, that is a major portion of what's most important. Because that's a part of prudence, to make prudent decisions, you know, regardless of if you get grant money, because this is going to compete with other agendas. So there's no, no doubt about that it competes with other agendas, but it doesn't make it a less worthy agenda. You all have highlighted why it's worthy. And the, the point of, of women, you know, I wrote that down in my, Commissioner Henry, I wrote down, it is an opportunity for us as a community to express respect for women, respect for their historical contributions, respect for Dr. Bethune. So it's an opportunity for us to do that. I, as a history teacher, found your remarks remarkably insightful, sir. And my first comment was that when I met with some people and I went home and thought about this, I don't ever want my children to look back and think that their father was in any way, shape, or form an enemy of our history. And I want to be able to, for them to look back and know that I believed in our history, and I believe that it is always worthy of our deepest and most sincere consideration. So tonight, all we're asking is that it be designated. But I want to go a step further. We get this part because we got, got the four votes already. But I think it's important that over the next three months, I don't know how long it will take for us to get through the process. How long do you think it'll take to get through? Just give me a, give me a.
Several months.
Several months?
Yes.
Okay, so several months, we're going to say, then I'll say, we, we want to be at the point, when we get to that point, when we're at the end, I would like for us to be at a point where a committee of residents and historical enthusiasts and community advocates, people who care about cultural services and leisure services, doesn't have to be 20 people, a good committee is seven people. But if we would establish a committee that can make prudent recommendations about how this building can best be used, therefore, when we get to a point that it's, it has been designated as a historical structure, we then can say to staff, this is what we want you to go out and try to create. Because they have to have something to write their grants up so that this building will then have a purpose that will resonate with, because let's not kid yourselves. All grants ain't free grants. Many of them come with some match requirements. So if it's worthy of all of that, we have to create an agenda that resonates with four people's spirits up here. And I haven't seen that agenda, but I believe the agenda exists because I believe in the enthusiasm that I've heard tonight. So do you believe that you can arrange for seven people to, to, to have a meeting? Or do you want us to pick the seven?
I was going to ask that if each commissioner would submit one name to represent them on this committee, that would be the appropriate, because I don't want people to say.
That's right.
Derek picked all the people that he don't want the building to stand or not, or to stand. So if each commissioner could submit a name to my attention, I will bring that, all those names back to you all at the next meeting for that group to be in strength. Because what would happen with one commissioner that would do 10 people, and we just need a first representative, so get ready for your phones to be.
Well, that's correct. That's correct. Yes.
So I recognize that tourism, historical tourism, is a huge untapped market, huge industry. I would ask that when we have our seven people, if they could please try to incorporate into their processes the rest of Daytona Beach's history. So I'm sitting here and I'm thinking, it's not just about the Rec Center. That could be a focal point. But can we start to think about the other neighborhoods that also have some historic relevance?
I, I think that your point tonight about this as a part of the Black Heritage Trail resonates well with me. And I think that we know and understand it has a purpose as a part of this narrative. I think that's a, a, a part that should be taken into consideration by this group as to how that can be highlighted. And there are, there are others, but I do think if we appoint the proper people, that can be achieved.
And Mr. Mayor, Ann Ruby put together a really detailed list of our facilities and local city facilities that are and aren't historically recognized, and, and recognizing those that, that should, that's something that could be somewhere to start.
Okay.
We will assign a, a staff member, an appropriate staff member will be assigned to be the liaison between the appointed commission board that will bring updates. Let them pick a chair. I've done boards before, but do you often just submit names in the next couple of meetings?
No, next meeting. We want it done next meeting.
So that means.
We want seven names.
Next meeting, two weeks.
We, we want to have seven names presented to the manager by the next meeting, and then we want to vote that night for this committee. And then you have 90 days to present something. You got the enthusiasm. You have 90 days to present something to us that they can then be prepared to go after once this is, you know, brought to, to that point. Does that make sense? Yes, ma'am.
They don't have to come from our zone specifically, do they?
Okay.
And there are a couple other small points. I would suggest we do have a forum for people that want to volunteer to be on boards, that you open that up to the public and not just be friends and family of the commission, obviously. So that would be one point. The second, of course, is that whatever committee is appointed, we'll do that at a public meeting, and the meetings of that committee will need to be public as well.
That's fine. Yeah, all good.
And then, as a curious process question, so we go ahead and we go through this, and then we go ahead and we apply for grants, we get the grants, we have a plan. We don't get the grants, what happens next?
Well, we don't get the grants, I'm going to be honest with you, there is no use for the building as it currently exists. The building doesn't work. And that, that shows that the building doesn't work. I'm not going to, if I'm, I'm not going to be supportive of keeping the building. But tonight, we're giving our community an opportunity and our staff an opportunity to help us to keep and preserve the building and to give it a purpose.
So when you submit those names, if you have the person's contact information, staff will reach out to them to fill out the form and go through the process of making it an official 90-day committee, a 100-day committee.
Okay.
Feature, looking for these grants, is there, do you know any of the projects that we are taking away from doing this?
I, I don't know any projects we're taking away. We've submitted that you all approve. Any grants that have approved, they will have to come from you also, and we will communicate. If these grants are going to go against grants that you all have already approved for us to submit, we will let you know.
Okay.
But we will make, like I said, we will have a liaison just to be the conduit to get information back and forth, so the people that you appoint to the board don't have to do full-fledged public records requests to get information or get research done from the city. We'll have a liaison. But once you get the list to us, we will reach out to them. I will probably, so I, I'm trying to make sure that it's not a political issue with my staff. I will probably be the first person that introduces the committee that you all want, what is expected, and then have someone to bring that information back. Let them appoint a chair and vice chair. But our, the grants writer, that is not a problem. They get paid a fee for the entire year. We can ask for the grant writer to do 100 grants or two grants. So whatever grants we can go after, we will. And as we stated, if we can't get the grants, we will communicate that there is no grants, and you all need to make a decision if you want to move forward with demolition or having us to try to figure out how to invest and make this a, a great facility in our community.
Okay. All right. So there, and then this is my final point, then we'll have a vote unless anybody else has a comment. Anybody else have another comment? No other comment? Then I want us to always be mindful, because there is a tendency here for us to like to blame the staff because of the condition of the building. And I would say that certainly, and I have said this in the past, there was an intent or a desire from my perspective, or a lack of desire from the previous manager, had a lack of desire for the building. That was obvious in the way the building is today. But it stops right there. Because there were more than three occasions, maybe as many as five occasions, that I, along with others, asked the commission to make a decision about the building. We didn't make a decision. So what we always have to remember, because we didn't direct, we didn't make a decision because it was made, for whatever reason. But we have to always remember that you make a decision here or you make a decision later. And when you don't make a decision upfront, this is what happens. This is what happens. And there's nothing, this is okay, this is good. But at the end of the day, if this is not what we want, when things come before us, we must make a decision. Okay? And that is it. We have no other comment. We have a motion. We have a second. We'll entertain a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Traeger.
Yes.
Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantu.
Yes.
Mayor Derrick O. Henry.
Yes. Motion carries. Seven zero. All right. We will entertain a, a five-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Good evening, and let us continue with our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 10B, which is Development and Administrative Services, changing the code of ordinances for unaltered animal permits to establish an annual renewal requirement. This is an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance amending section 14-19B2 of the City Code to revise the unaltered animal permit by removing the lifetime issuance of an unaltered animal permit and establish an annual renewal requirement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing effective date.
So move. Second.
We have a motion. We'll take a second from, a motion from Commissioner Reed, take a second from Commissioner Traeger. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor?
I was just kind of wondering. I never see any unleashed dogs wandering around anymore anyhow. I've seen cats, but I haven't seen dogs.
Yeah, you got some, some around. I don't.
Really? Cats or dogs?
Lots of cats, but there's a pack of dogs running around in my neighborhood.
Really?
And my neighbors have warned me about my dog being free, you know, they might want to.
Yeah.
Must love on him.
What kind of dog you got?
He's a Jack Russell Terrier mixed with Maltice.
Okay. Observation.
He's a, he's a Jackie Tice.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for April 20th. Moving on to item 10C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Circle C Boat and RV Storage Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 18.9 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, northwest of the FPL Power Line easement, and 0.75 miles south of the ALPJ Boulevard intersection from M3, General Industrial, and SFR5, Single Family Residential 5, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Circle C Boat and RV Storage Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of a boat and RV storage facility to include enclosed storage units and outside storage, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So move. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry. We have questions or comments?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure for the record, it was zoned for M3 for a single family and residential, and we are rezoning for the boat, I guess, right? RV storage, boat storage.
Yes, thank you, Dennis Marozek, Planning Director. The current zoning is M3, which is an industrial zoning district, and an SFR5, which is a single family. It's going to be rezoned to a planned development to allow the boat storage, boat and RV storage location. Thank you.
And for the record, I do have Joey Posey here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
I had a question, too. Could, could you step up and tell us about how much the, the property is wetland that you're not going to destroy, please?
I just like this for the record.
For the record, Parker Menchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. If you look at the exhibit that's up, the northerly, probably one-third of the property is wetland that is being preserved along with the Upland Buffer. There's also a 50-foot scenic setback along Clyde Morris that's heavily wooded, and that's a better shot of it. So you can see on the left side, the signature of the wetland, that'll all remain and provide a buffer.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Do you all have any other questions or comments? Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for April 20th. Moving on to item 10D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to the Emory Riddle Aeronautical University Comprehensive Sign Plan Resolution, a resolution approving the Third Amendment to the Comprehensive Sign Plan for Emory Riddle Aeronautical University to modify the electronic message center requirements, repealing all ordinances, excuse me, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion. Commissioner Reed, second Commissioner Cantu. We have any questions or comments? All right. We have a speaker?
No, I just have Parker Menchenberg here for any questions.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There are no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to item 10E, it's the City Manager's Office Beautification Tree Advisory Board Appointments Resolution, a resolution appointing two members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to serve terms expiring December 31st, 2024, and providing an effective date, and Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Good evening. This is an item is to appoint two members to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board. These two appointments are to fill vacant positions in Zone 1 and 3. We have the following applications from Zone 1, Sharon Weatherholt and Kara Keith. Commissioner Traeger?
I'd like to nominate Sharon Weatherholt.
Do we have a second? What? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we also just do the other one?
For Zone 3, we have Jennifer Nezak. Commissioner May?
I would like to appoint Jennifer Nezak.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Was it the same person? So we're voting on them at the one time?
Opposite.
Opposite of each other? Oh, okay.
We just want to have them make the recommendation, then do one vote to a point.
Yes.
I.
I recommend Sharon Weatherholt.
I recommend Sharon Weatherholt.
All right. Now, we have a motion to recommend both. You just need to have one person do it, and then one person second. There is, but she chose one, one of the two.
I choose Sharon Weatherholt.
She's already chosen, so just make the motion for both.
Okay. Motion to appoint Sharon Weatherholt and Jennifer Naisack to the Beautification Tree.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Item number 10F is the City Manager's Office Historic Preservation Board Appointment Resolution, a resolution appointing one member to the Historic Preservation Board for a three-year term expiring April 14, 2024, and providing an effective date, and Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This appointment is being made by Commissioner of Zone 5. We have one applicant needing the requirement, and that is Ray Masson. Commissioner Henry?
Motion to approve Ray Masson. Second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Okay. We'll move on to item 10G, it's the City Manager's Office Public Art and Cultural Heritage Program, the report and discussion of the Public Art and Cultural Heritage Program. And I believe Deputy City Manager Drew Driscoll to present.
Good evening. Drew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager, Fire Chief, and once upon a time, I modeled in a Sears catalog as a baby. So, fun fact of the day. Try to, try to mix it up for y'all. Keep it lively.
Good job. That's good.
Yeah.
You don't want to see them all modeling.
No, I said as a baby.
As a baby.
So this evening, offering you a brief conversation regarding the Public Arts and Cultural Heritage Program. I do want to recognize the staff team of Paula Long, Hannah Ward, Michelle Tolliver, Rosaskew, Ben Gross, Reed Burger, Dennis Morozak, Jim Morris, and myself. So many people, because there's so many aspects to this program. It's not as simple as modeling clay or painting the side of a wall. There's a lot to it. So this evening, we'll go through a couple points. Additionally, amateur artist Drew Driscoll. I want to take the opportunity to show off two of my pieces. I'm not Pablo Picasso. No one's going to spend $10,000 to paint a mural of my art. However, from this, you start to get some insight into who I am. Similarly, for public art, I enjoy the ocean, Ms. Reed. For public art, you start to get an idea of the identity of the city of Daytona Beach. So art has an emotional connection to people, but it also has economic advantages and tourism advantages. So no positive comments on my art. Appreciate it.
I like your colors.
The first, the first thing is creating a sense of place. If we walk downstairs of City Hall, we definitely know we're in a governmental building. Whereas now, imagine that draped in local art, helping identify who we are as a community, and who we want to be, and what we think is important to us. Art helps, as I said, identify to our citizens and guests, but it really offers that glimpse of who we are. With, people enjoy unique qualities of communities, and the state of Florida is the largest coastline in the Lower 48. And so people come to Daytona Beach for our unique qualities. I view public art as only an enhancement to that reason to visit Daytona Beach and to understand who we are. Lastly, there's an economic development component of public art. Much like this commission has incentivized the creation of apartments downtown to get heads and beds and patronize the businesses, public art has that same effect, drawing and activating areas and making it a welcome area to attend and enjoy local businesses. Here we see the three art murals that the City Commission has already approved. These are serving as our pilot programs. Two of them are in Midtown, and one is Downtown. Michelle Tolliver and Ben Gross have been working diligently, trying to make sure that all the different players have signed on to the agreement. So hopefully, we could start seeing progress being made before the end of this year. These will again serve as our pilot and be funded through this program. For public art in Daytona Beach, it exists today. In fact, if you look at the background of each of these slides, these are it, each murals that exist in Daytona Beach today. For example, this one is a window, or a former blocked-in window on Ivy Lane Alley. But for public art, there is a process that has to go through. For our wall graphic process you see here, it goes from application to planning board to City Commission approval. As we move forward with the public arts program, that may have to change depending on the direction of the commission. Does it go through this art board, or does it continue on the normal process? The next one, we see window signs, finding that balance of safety, security, and aesthetics. From a police and fire perspective, how much of the window can be covered so we could still see interior of this building when we're out on patrol? Would you want to see commercial messaging on those window signs? You want to allow text? If so, is the text have to be incorporated into the art, or could it be graffiti art that says $5 for $10 t-shirts? These are conversations that staff is getting into, and again, your feedback is necessary. Trying to speed through this. The current program outline that we're going off of is a citywide program that's focused on walkable corridors. For the pedestrian corridors, this creates more of a, if we're looking on a citywide program, it's more that we're an inclusive art city, as opposed to siloed art districts that have no connection. When it comes to art defining areas versus areas defining the art, by nature, art is raw, organic, and it helps define the beauty of an area. Inspiration comes from the surroundings of the canvas or the wall that we might be painting. Once art is installed, whether it is a statue of Dr. Bethune, or a mural of an octopus on a wall, it's the art that defines that area, and not as much the area dictating what that art needs to be. Do we want to force a painting of a beach ball into an area that is best for a lady holding a sun with sunbeams, as shown here? The next is our initial rollout versus long-term vision. Right now, city staff is working on the idea of having a preliminary plan to present to the City Commission, and from there, once we have that solid foundation, build it up to the greater vision of what you want it to be. So get something started, not to mention, we are talking about the coronavirus dollars that have funded this, but we need to get the project started to expend those funds before the deadline. And with regard to funding, the City Commission has graciously set aside $300,000 as a kickoff for this program. As the federal funds begin to dry up later on, city staff will bring forward different funding mechanisms if you choose to continue the program, whether that is funding out of the general fund, or some other jurisdictions use a percent of art funding mechanism, which is all new construction, a percentage of their project must include art, or they could deposit into art trust fund to help sustain this program. Currently envisioned by staff is a five-member advisory board, and as you see here, we have at least three art professionals from different disciplines, architect, art history major, art curator, urban planner. We felt that in review and research of other programs throughout the state, that this offers a diverse view of how art could be implemented into a community, and they have the necessary background to serve as jurists, as they determine if this art is, in fact, meets the qualifications before presenting it to the commission for approval. As I mentioned, building in phases is, again, these are the professionals. You saw my amateur work. I am not a professional artist. That utilizing the experience of these professionals, how can they help grow this program into a true blue-ribbon program that we could not only be proud of, but could preserve the test of time? And as I mentioned, part of their purpose, as an advisory board, they are the art jurists, no different than the Halifax Art Show, that they would review the art, make sure that it meets all the checkmarks. If it is the city commissioning the said art, that it meets the spirit of what the city is looking for. This, dealing with artists' rights and protected speech, I'll try to buzz through this, because this topic alone has exhausted several hours of staff's time. There are a number of laws and rights that not only protect artists, but their intellectual properties, copyrights. You can't just go ahead and touch up someone else's painting, because it changes the context of that painting. So you have to draft the program to that, and make sure that the agreements are in place, that we can maintain these buildings, or these pieces. As far as the public venue, public art needs to be accessible to all. And to accomplish that, there's need for easements and agreements with property owners that are providing the canvases, if we're talking mural. Need to make sure that it's viewable and accessible to the public, because that's who's intended to enjoy this. The last line here, protected speech, commercial speech, our speech, and, feel free to jump in or bend in the audience. With regard to our speech, if we are the customer, and we are commissioning a piece to be made, we could dictate to a degree of what that art will be. Not that it'll be a beach ball, but perhaps that it's not a, something that someone may deem obscene. So we could, we could dictate what our speech as a community is going to be. However, right now, if a business wanted to come forward with a mural of something that we might not enjoy, they have that ability. We are not a regulator of free speech, or we cannot restrict their speech to a degree. So as this program comes forward, there's going to be a lot of information that comes forward that helps protect the city, helps make sure that we're ensuring that the image that you want to put forward to our community is actually put in writing to help protect us. The last item there is commercial speech. As I mentioned, with window signage, what is the art? Do you want it to count towards their signage requirements, or do you want them to design art perhaps in the window front of a vacant building? With commercial speech, do you want them to include text in that? Do they want to advertise the name of their business? Or perhaps, let's say, if we're doing a art mural of the Speedway, it would seem natural to incorporate the word Daytona into the outer retaining wall of the Speedway. Whereas if I painted Drew's Burger Barn on the side of the building, that is definitely signage and commercial speech that you may not want to do. So again, staff will bring forward in the proposal what we think is something in the spirit of what's discussed tonight, that offers maybe a small degree of commercial message, but not outlandish commercial message, if that's your desire. And like I said, quick, so a couple questions that staff has, just to help us proceed. Are we okay with moving forward with a phased approach to start with a foundation and build from there?
You looking for an answer from that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I am okay with that. How are you all? Phased approach? Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I skipped over, in haste, mentioning two different forms of art, visual art as we know it for paintings and sculpture stuff along those lines. In a future phase, would we want to add performing arts? So I could envision a funding mechanism for bandshelf concerts or Midtown Motown, but I would say, if you wish to do that, we could bring it forward in a future phase, or maybe we'll have time to think about it. Is it okay?
I personally do not wish to do that as it relates to these funds, because they are designated for, and we already support those things, but this is for murals in these regions, and the art of that, that we've kind of outlined it, so I don't support that personally.
I'm just curious if you, as a conversation with digital art?
Microphone.
Sorry. Digital art, are we looking at that at all? Electronic art, anything like that?
We have not examined digital art, no ma'am, but it's definitely something, I'm not familiar with it.
Curious.
Okay. But that doesn't mean in the future that you couldn't do it, but just not with these. Our, the purpose of this is not, I didn't envision it as performing arts. But it doesn't mean that performing arts couldn't be a part of it, but just not the funding, like, you know, we talked about busting in different areas where you would allow people to perform in certain spaces, but, so you follow what I'm saying?
Yes. So we'll definitely move forward with the preliminary plan, and if things change in the future, we're ready to serve your vision. Are we okay with, if we're talking from a sculpture perspective or a mural perspective, are we okay with a $10,000 grant limit, but of course, leave some language that an exception could come before the City Commission, entire building that wants to be something that they could request going above the $10,000 grant limit?
Yep.
Yes? All right. Thank you. Is the five-person board of experienced professionals, is that a reasonable direction for staff to begin drafting towards?
Come from Daytona Beach, or can they come from all over, if they're trained in those areas?
At the, at the choosing of the commission, that is where they could come.
We were just trying to figure out, could we put that out as the application?
Process that we will, the board will have to be brought back to you all to approve the board, but is this, are those individuals the type of people we wanted the board to fill out applications to submit to you all for approval?
I have a question. On this role, if...
I have a question. On the role and composition of the board, it says a five-member, sorry, five-member advisory board, but it didn't underline that the first bullet, it says at least three professional artists of different disciplines, then it lists four other people.
So of the composition of the board, those three primaries would be professional artists that have been juried, or whatever the qualifications are. In addition to the other two positions, they could hold one of those professional credentials or experiences. So it's not that we're going to have four additional people. We might have a urban planner and an art historian, and those fill the two other roles.
Okay. So at least three professionals, and then two of these other roles?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Yes. Unless you want something different, we will draft to that.
I'm good with that part, but I envision that you would have someone to represent who's a citizen, or a business owner, who has been passionate about art. So if you have one person from, say, Midtown, one person from Downtown, and one person from the beachside or Main Street area, because you're talking about those really redevelopment areas, is what I was hoping that we were concentrating, this is concentrated in those areas, right?
Yes, it's definitely a citywide program, but those are the walkable corridors that we had envisioned, and we've received tons of interest from art professionals that live within the city, that of course, they would come forward as applicants for your selection. But we did not do a zone-specific call-out in lieu of looking for the professionals within those fields.
So my point is that if you kept your, your, your professionals, I still believe you should have some ordinary people, residents, or business people who are interested in this process, and who inspired much of this as a part of it.
Okay.
And so it may be two people, because I had two more people.
I concur, because they're the ones that asked for this.
Yeah, they're the ones.
And, and I know in the Midtown area, they created a board themselves to vet the things that are going to go in their area.
What do we consider, what do we consider an art professional? I'm curious.
If they have possessed one of those qualifications, and when it comes from a art professional perspective, there are, the various cities that already have art programs, they do have criteria such as that they've been a juried artist, and that they sell their wares or their product. And just for clarification, the addition of, let's say, two residents, is that to increase the board size, the size of the board to seven? Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Perfect.
Commissioners, all, remember that any of these board applications will be presented to you all as recommendations and for your approval. So 50 applications come in and they meet all of the qualifications that are going to come to you, but probably we will be able to narrow it down, even though you'll still get all of the applications to see, but we'll narrow it down to you, the ones that we think meet the criteria that you've asked for.
So how many of these people can come from outside of Daytona?
It's up to this board.
Ah.
I work for you.
I think they need to be Daytona people, because they know our local landscape, what we want, what we need, what we've been shorted on. We've done a lot of studies where people come from somewhere else and tell us what we need. Advertising board, you know, we got somebody from Vancouver telling us what to do now. So I prefer the people stay right here, come from right here in our community.
To offer...
It is up to us.
Huh?
It is up to us.
Okay.
It is.
We'll see.
We are going to make the decision.
So if I could ask to offer guidance to staff, if we could have a consensus direction of, do you want city residents or business owners, or do you care where they come from?
What I would recommend, and I don't disagree, but I also believe that there are people who love Daytona Beach who may not live here, and so what I would recommend is that that just be a part of the application so that we would know their relationship, whether their business, work for a business. I got a resume of the art curator, if you will, for One Daytona Today. You would like to see that person be a part of this board. That person has an exceptional resume, and I fully intend to likely support them. But my point is, I just, we would know. So then we would know, and we would be able to vet them and discuss that, because I do value the people who live here. I'm thinking those two people, absolutely, I would want to be in Daytona. The other five, the two people who are not the professionals. The professionals I would like, if they don't live here, my preference is that they work here and they work for a business here. But we may have enough that they all work here. But I don't want to say Daytona Beach, while I, is, we are a city that people from all over Volusia County claim and they own, and they care about its success. And so we don't want to just, I think, put someone off just because they don't live here.
And if I may add something, I would actually like to see someone that was either an artist or on a board from a city that already has murals. I think that would be interesting to have someone, you know, that's already walked this path on this board.
And I believe that is...
From this area.
And I do believe that is our goal, to really utilize their experiences, as opposed to me putting water on fire for a living.
Mm-hmm.
If necessary, as staff deliberates on how to present the window art component, our preference is to bring it forward on this initial offering, but if it needs to be delayed, is that acceptable, or am I going to get yelled at by my boss?
What was, what was the question again?
Window art.
Window art. It's just a, there's some complexities to that. Our goal is to bring it forward when we bring the overall program.
But if it's...
But if not...
It's delayed, okay. No problem. Bring the murals forward.
Yeah, and part of that comes with this last question, which is the commercial messaging. Would the preference be that it is art-only in nature, and perhaps the text plays an integral component of this art, is complementary to the art? Or do we want to allow 10% text inside arts? And this is primarily murals, if I'm speaking.
I'd have to see an example of what you're stating.
Okay.
So...
The board could decide.
Okay.
I think that's a good point. I think this is a good point, that the board can determine that.
All right. Yes, ma'am. And I know that was a brief, but as in respect to this evening, I thought I'd go quicker, but is there any other feedback that could help staff illustrate your vision in writing?
I have a question about the art concept in general. Is this, are we doing anything with the downstairs? Is that all part of it? This, anything, the downstairs art program we had going?
Yes, I would envision that as a great aspect. So not only are we showing off within a community, but this is our central hub of community government. What a great location to have an art gallery. And I know this commission has expressed interest not only in professional art, but perhaps youth artists. It is definitely something very reasonable.
Because I would still like to be involved in that concept, because we brought that up before. And the other thing is, I'm so glad we got here. It took us about three years. I went to St. Petersburg, saw, I will never forget, the man with the squid coming out of his eye, which I found very disturbing to look at. I still remember this wall mural, but they had an entire tour of murals by bus. That was part of the tourism package that they offered as part of the chamber experience. So I envision that. I envision a Black History Trail as well in conjunction with it. I think it could be really good.
Thank you, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you for your direction. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for presenting this, Drew. But this first artist, no.
No. Oh, that's a tear in my eye right now.
Which eye?
My right eye. I'll survive.
Drew, don't worry. Commissioner Cantu is, she buys art now at auctions.
Can I hear 10,000? Okay.
But you should not send her as a representative of the city. You tell her 1,000 and she...
Oh, that's right. I enjoyed that art, by the way. I did get the chance to see it.
April Fools.
Then you bought it.
Yeah, I bought it. We actually purchased at the Cochrane Grand Opening, the blind facility. Commissioner Cantu was our selector of, well, she was the person that was buying stuff, and she actually got me for a second, because I told her up to 1,000. And I was in a meeting, and she called me, and she says, I tried to tell them that I was only bidding 1,000, but they thought I said 10,000. I said, well, I advise you to tell them you're not purchasing it.
And I said, I can't.
We were purchasing, $10,000. But art looks nice, it's in the office.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much as well. Great, that's one of the major things that we want to see coming forward, so that's exciting.
And that was our last...
All right. We'll start with Commissioner Henry, right? Commissioner Henry?
I'm very excited that we decided to move forward with the Direct Center, and that is all my comments for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
I'm excited about the Second Annual Seafood Festival coming back to Dr. Mary McLoughlin Boulevard on April 30th. All businesses will be allowed to stay open, will only be utilizing city property, and we will have an area that's designated for accessory vending, particularly for those who came out and were a part of the Holiday Bazaar. We've got space for them so that it's not just about the food, but it's about the arts and what have you that citizens have on display that they would like to sell as well. 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, April 30th. Be there.
I will, definitely. Commissioner Trager?
I also went to the opening of the Cochrane Davis Center. They had a whole row of pictures, and they invited you to touch that, and it was very interesting. And I understand they're going to have a sensory garden also, so.
I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
I would just like to thank all the people that put a lot of time into researching the Rec Center, from these right here on the front row to all the other people that were involved, and especially the residents, it turned out to express their desire to put it on the historic list. Also, it's been enjoyable being up here. I know I seem to entertain Ms. Cantu over there sometimes, but, you know, some people are easily entertained. That's all I got for tonight.
I would like to know from Chief Driscoll, where we are with the Ring system for the
CARES money? I'm wondering kind of where we are with that. Can I get an update on that, please?
You can speak to it.
The charter says I have to get permission from you. Drew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager, Chief. Within regard to the security initiative, the crime initiative dealing with the Ring cameras, we are engaging with the police department, since it is a crime enforcement-related activity, that they would create the application process, and it seems as if we are going to focus on the senior population this first go-around. And once that is announced, of course, it will be marketed, and each of the commissioners that are participating in that will be notified. Another component of that is, once they apply and they are validated as one to receive a camera, we envision actually bringing them into Valor, into the police department, so not only to talk about the camera, but talk about crime prevention processes, things they could do within their community to help out, and also how to share that video with the police department within their see something, say something program.
As we spoke before, my focus was, I'm not sure how you're going to do this, but Uptown, the Uptown area, they have a lot of, they have some situations up there, so I really would like to figure out how we can get that area, the cameras.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we could definitely designate it targeted areas, as you guys wish.
Okay, super. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then I'm hoping that I can call on Ms. Jenny Nazek for a favor of some sort. And the favor is that there are some beautification projects that require some pickup, some under-the-bridge trash pickup. Main Street Bridge and then ISB, and I'm thinking about the base of the bridge, and then also Veterans Bridge. So people, the garbage collects right there, and it just, it's unsightly if you're on paddle boarding. We've got people doing paddle boarding, and I might even be able to get three brothers to volunteer to do some water pickup. Apparently, they're picking up quite a bit of trash from the ocean, or from the river itself. I think that is, one other thing, interesting meeting, I'm hoping that they will meet with the rest of you also, especially you, Mr. Mayor. So I met with Jeff White with the Volusia Homeless Coalition, and they showed me a presentation of a proposed change on North Street. And it could be, it's a potential, it has potential, to really change the way that entire block looks. And it would do, it would go a long way to work with crime in bordering Zone Two, bordering Zone Three, across Ridgewood on both sides for two or three blocks in both directions. So I'm hoping that when they call you for a meeting, that we will all take the meeting and watch their presentation. I thought it was very good. It had potential for us, potential for the North Street area.
I'm sorry, Commissioner May, what street did you say?
North Street, with the J. Food Stores. That has been a big, a big thing, and it impacts Uptown and that whole two-to-three block east and west of Ridgewood. I've also been working with some of the businesses on Ridgewood, and we're going to try and work on some sort of project, beautification project, a cleanup project between Bellevue Extension and then down to North Street, but it will be driven by the business community. And so that's, we're going to try to figure out how we can get a cleaner, fresher street process going. So hopefully this will help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, manager and I, when the manager first got here, we met with him and gave them some feedback on the presentation that they now have, and I have a meeting scheduled to see the current, what they have come away with. So I look forward to that. Yeah.
Commissioner Strickland, I'm going to be nice to you tonight, but if you do need some help in your zone, give me a call, email me. Because you don't know what you're talking about half the time in my zone. Okay.
Okay, guys.
Okay. I'm...
You have the floor.
Yes. There's a community meeting, it's going to be a public meeting on Thursday, April the 14th, at 6:00 PM at the Presbyterian Church. Again, and this is regarding the Hillwood Plan PD. I've been having a lot of negotiations with NASCAR, representative from Hillwood, their attorney, Mark Watts, and we will have some county staff there, a couple of county council as well. So if you would like to show up, anyone?
That's on Thursday?
Thursday, April the 14th.
I had it on my calendar, but I have a work to conflict.
Okay, and?
Six.
Six.
Six o'clock. Yes, and actually, I'll pass this around to all of you. Okay, and I just want to like to make a few things clear as well. I thought this was clear, but I know there was a county councilwoman yesterday, and the county council was talking that there was a lot of misinformation going on about Amazon, and she asked her staff, what did we pass? And staff goes, well, you put me on the spot. And it was, then he said, well, we passed the fear share. Well, on November 2nd of 20... And I'd like to have Jim Morris up here, just so if I'm saying anything wrong, we're correct. On November 2nd of 2021, Item 6A, yes, there was a fear share agreement that was passed between the developer and, which was Development 634, which is top, Tarpon at the same, I guess you was calling 634, Jim Morris? Would be Tarpon, known as Amazon now. Also, on Item 6B, they passed the Pelican Bay extension, which that wasn't mentioned because it was kind of thrown back like we passed Amazon. Well, we did not, the commission did not pass Amazon. Amazon was already approved, the 211 acres are, was owned by NASCAR. The half of the eastern side is zoned for M3, which was zoned for Amazon, and it never came before the commission. The only thing that came before the commission is the incentive agreement. Now, right now, this meeting is the Hillwood PD, which is the western side, which it was, is zoned for sports district and the races, which will be coming before us, which I've been negotiating about this Pelican Bay extension to try to relieve some pressure off the residents of Pelican Bay. And we have come to some agreements, and that's why we're going to have the meeting, and Mark Watts is going to give a presentation. But the Hillwood and the Amazon are two different things. And we did not pass the Pelican Bay extension, the county did. So I'd just like that councilwoman who's confused to know that. And also, in August, when they did have the meeting regarding the Tarpon Project, which is known as Amazon now, that was done on August 19th of last year. Now, all the lanes that showed for that meeting, all the exits, did not show the Pelican Bay exit. It showed Williamson and Bellevue, which I have all this. Am I correct so far? Okay. I just want to make this clear, so everyone knows out there, that the city of Daytona Beach did not pass the Amazon. It was already zoned. We did not pass the Pelican Bay extension, only county. All that land is owned by county, and part of the airport, and part of the Volusia County Master Plan, that's been going on since 2014, which I have the conceptual map somewhere in front of me, which states 2016. So I'm just making this very clear, that Amazon and Hillwood are two separate projects right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I didn't have anything to say.
Oh, wait, I do have one other thing for you.
Go ahead.
There is a meeting, I have a meeting on August 18th regarding the, and it's not an official meeting, because nothing's been presented to the city, regarding the South Golf Course of Pelican Bay. But I also have another meeting regarding Grand Champion this same time. So I would like to see if you could go in my place and kind of...
Which day is that?
August 18th, which I will have staff send over to you.
August.
I mean, not August, I'm sorry, I got mixed up. This month, April.
Okay.
18.
What time is the meeting, April 18th?
That's at 6:00.
What day is April 18th?
It's a Tuesday, I believe.
April 18th.
A Monday or Tuesday?
It's a Monday.
Monday.
April 18th is a Monday.
Oh, April 18th is a Monday?
Yeah.
I should be able to go, but I can answer tomorrow.
Okay, because I'm going to be at a different meeting regarding another subject. Okay, thank you.
Okay. That, I realize that the Amazon scenario has brought about great angst on the part of the people who live in Pelican Bay. the part of the people who live in Pelican Bay. And we certainly sympathize with their predicament and plight as it relates to that, and the stress that it's created for the residents. But it is, Commissioner Cantu is accurate in her description of what we supported. And if we didn't provide the incentive, they still had the right to do what they did. And from my perspective, the incentive was congruent with a position that I took 10 years ago personally as an elected official, that these were the types of projects that I would support based on, you know, the idea of utilizing TIF dollars to attract businesses and to create a greater community. And most of the things that are transformational in our community have transpired utilizing that mechanism. And that includes One Daytona, it includes Tanger, Trader Joe's, and a number of other projects that have utilized that prescription. So that's something that, you know, you have to use that as a tool in your toolbox to try to create the destination that we want to be. And I realize that the people who live in Pelican Bay are frustrated by that, and we also had an obligation to the residents in Daytona Beach who earn less than $20,000 a year, or $22,000 a year. You know, and that, that was probably the biggest reason for our, I think, our decision to support it. So I will leave it at that, but I, I do want to continue and appreciate your efforts to try to make right out of it as much as we could. And you've done a yeoman's job in bringing them to the table, and they have done a good job of agreeing to come to the table after the fact.
Yeah, because actually, Hillwood doesn't even really need to be. Working with us, because Hillwood and Amazon are two separate things, which Hillwood wants to be good neighbors. And most of my residents in Pelican Bay are okay with Amazon. What they are not okay is the Pelican Bay Extension coming in front of our east gate with over 600 semis a day coming out in front of our east gate, which they want it moved to Williamson, which I do not know why the county will not move it to Williamson, because there is no homes over there. And I know Bevel Road's a state road, Williamson's a county, and to me, it seems like it's all about money, who's going to pay for the roads, instead of all the resident, all my residents on Bevel Road that's going to be impacted with those 600 semi trucks coming out in front of us.
Precisely, precisely. And so I will conclude my remarks tonight by saying that my firm belief is that even this committee, this meeting tonight has illustrated that we are really a city that's headed in the right directions on 100 different fronts. And I am immensely appreciative of the residents and your voices tonight. I am more inspired by what I heard and what you did and what you said and the way that you went about it. It is, it doesn't always feel good to go through the process of being pushed, but it always feels good in my heart to be the mayor of a city where residents believe that they'll be heard, and they take the time to advocate for what you believe in. And to those who disagreed with this position tonight, I continue to respect you because you two had many nuanced and positive, not necessarily positive, but many nuanced and insightful reasons that you did not support this process. But the process of how city government should work, I think, has worked tonight. And what I hope emerges from all of this is that we will just be a better community because of it. And so I want to, again, express my gratitude. And it's a pleasure to work with you all, and I would like for us to always remember, you know, we're doing the work of the residents, and that's really, you know, why we're here. And let's always remember that as a, as a body. And tonight, I think we did the work of the citizens of Daytona Beach. So with that said, Mr. Manager, do you have any remarks?
Just one quick remark, I am truly an advocate for our educational institutions here, and if you are not watching Emory Riddle, Aaron Nautical, and Bethune-Cutman's?
I'm sorry, if you are not watching Emory Riddle, Aaron Nautical, and Bethune-Cutman Universities' baseball, softball, and lacrosse programs, you are missing out on a treat. They are at the top of their games in their sport, so we need to support these student athletes in this area, and many of us have been going out. But I'm just telling you, if you haven't been watching those sports teams, they are at the top of their league, and when they win championships, it is a good reflection of us. And not only them winning championships, but they are at the top of their game if you're following them on their Twitter accounts and the academic standings in their different divisions. And so take the time to go to Emory Riddle Stadium, or Jackie Robinson Stadium, or Bethune Point, or Sunnyland, and watch these teams, these student athletes, they are extremely doing well, and they've asked us to, asked me to share with you all that they need your support at their games.
Okay, thank you, Mr.?
Nothing, brother, thank you.
Okay, this concludes our portion of the commission meeting. At this time, we look forward to hearing again from our residents.
Okay, our first speaker is Lucy Desmore, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Pass it out for Lucy.
Yeah.
Good evening, Lucy Desmore, 840 Donlotten Avenue, Port Orange, Realty Pros Assured, as well as 1643 West Paradise Lane, my personal residence. We have a group of professional business entities such as real estate developers, our contractor, and other public citizens that we have met over the last few weeks, and I believe you all have the small folders that was passed out. I do want to point out also, before I get into this, on April 30th also is our annual housing fair, it takes place every year, we missed a couple because of COVID, but it will be at Allen Chapel AME Church in the parking lot on April 30th. So people have time to go over to the festival, as well as to be a part of, anyone that you know, that potential home buyers to come out to get the information they need. So a group of business entities such as real estate developers, contractor, and public citizens met over the last few weeks and reviewed the concept of small footprint housing. The business people leaning favor, leaning favorably in this direction have also attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting here recently at City Hall. A presentation was made and further discussion conducted by the members of that board. There were recommendations made regarding possible sizes of a small footprint home and the lot size change. The business entities involved have identified a property in the city of Daytona Beach, and our general contractors have been brought on board, commissioned for that. We also have our private funding source is on board to bring this project to Daytona Beach. As noted in the 2022 legislative final report from the state of Florida, increase zoning flexibility for affordable housing. Senate Bill 962 allows local governments to greenlight mixed-use projects in commercial and industrial zones. If the development is not using money from state apartment incentive loan programs and 10% of the building's units reserved for affordable housing. On this basis, that leaves you open to the purpose of bringing in small footprint homes. At the last Volusia County Council meeting, the second reading was, took place, which allows the lot sizes to be smaller and the smaller square footages. We look forward to making your dreams of homeownership a reality, or just a change in the way citizens choose to gain homeownership. And we hope that you all will consider that, and we plan to move forward as quickly as possible and get some tiny homes in the city of Daytona Beach. You have your information to look over, please do so. Any questions? Any comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
A question first, is the, what did the county approve for?
The county had their second reading, so I believe they have moved forward with square footage can be smaller, zero lot line.
Zero lot line.
Yes, so, and we have, what size will your, the home, this is our contractor, what size would the?
Homes will range from 500 to 600 square feet, and lots, somewhere around 40 by 50 should be sufficient.
And then, what did the Affordable Housing Advisory Board make as a recommendation for lot sizes for small footprint homes?
Forty, they said 290 square feet for the size of the house.
Mr. Gellis?
What did they, yeah, because he?
The recommendation of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was 240 square feet. That aligns with what this commission decided on the accessory dwelling units as a minimal size, so we thought it would be good if the two were aligned as the minimum.
And one more time, this is, I'm glad you're moving forward with something, someone came forward, where were you looking to do this in terms of a development project? Did you have a?
Current piece of property is on Brentwood Drive, Daytona Beach, order 321177, but it is the city of Daytona Beach. 3.3 acres, ready to be cleared, we have our utilities commission company that is ready to do the work, we have our funding in place ourselves, we do not need any assistance from anyone else.
How many homes can go in this?
Except to get it passed, ma'am.
How many homes can go in this property?
How many homes?
Between 30 and 36.
And what would the average cost be?
Sorry?
The average cost per home?
$150 at 500 square feet. That includes?
And if you think that is not affordable housing this day and age, that is affordable housing. Anything else that we go out and get for people, I'm out looking for people, for first-time home buyers, and that used to be, that's a thing of the past, someone comes and says, find me the $89,000 place, that's a fixer-upper. Find me the $120,000 place, that's a fixer-upper. And in many cases, 189,000 is now gut out and remodel and bring it in, when it, when they finish remodeling it, it will cost $250,000 easily. So people need to keep that in mind and forget about the things of the past, or what affordable housing actually means, because it is no longer an investment property that costs 89 or 50,000, I'm going to get a bargain somewhere, you're not getting a bargain. Fixer-uppers are up, they are way past the hundreds, way past.
These are new homes, well.
But these are a brand-new home, and they are not on wheels, they bill them pour slab and build the entire structure on-site.
And?
Conventional construction on a foundation and slab.
Sure, so in November, I brought this small home footprint, right? So we got a lot of interest there. What happened with the leads from that? People signed up, are some of those people ready to go?
I have been calling back several of those people, we have a list of, sorry, we have a list of three pages of folk that we're going through right now that signed up, they put their email address and their phone number, and we've been making contacts back for permanently would like to go ahead and apply for.
And is this going to be a community? So what is the community involved? Like, what does that mean to me as a community?
It's a community, a regular subdivision. Rather than putting spot homes in different places next to 1,600 or 1,700 square foot place, you simply have a community of 25 to 35 houses, and that is a subdivision.
Give me a landmark on?
This is the location of Brentwood and Vine, between Vine and?
No, that's, no.
So what is this?
Center, Center Street and Center and Brentwood. Off of Mason Avenue, get on Center, and the first street is Brentwood, take a left and go down a little ways, and you will come across the property.
Between Center and Nova?
Between Center and what?
Nova.
What, what used to, what was there prior, there's just a lot there, was it, were they doing farming there at one time, a little gardening?
No, you're thinking of Eighth Street.
That's Eighth Street?
Yeah.
Okay, I need to go by and drive and see this, what you're talking about.
I would love to have you.
What does the, what does the rest of the community think of this, the surrounding community? What do they think of it? Like, what is?
We have not given a, went over and did a, you know, scenario of a survey with anyone. There is a mobile home park across the street that is in a sort of a dilapidated state, which we thought, once you start something better on one side, then some improvement could be made at the other areas that were there and kind of bring the whole area up to par.
And so what do you all need from us?
Just to meet again and do some zoning approval, variances, whatever, that needs to take place so that it can flourish with the lot sizes and the size of the square footage.
So we need to go from the 950 that we have now to a smaller lot size?
A smaller square footage.
A smaller square foot home.
But it's that particular parcel.
Yeah, and then we also have smaller parcels, right? The parcel requirement is smaller, everything kind of reduces inward to relative space. Okay.
Okay, I, I would ask staff to work with you all to bring back whatever you need to be able to do this, and then that's, it puts it in our hands to vote on it.
You would need a PD zoning application.
I'm in favor of having an opportunity to vote on it.
And what would we need, you said the application?
A planned development zoning application through Mr. Morris, who was here earlier.
Okay, so that, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to kick it, if you need, you need to know what you need to do, so you do what you do.
Okay.
And it comes before us, and we have to make a decision. If we, we talk, Commissioner Hendrick brought this up, Commissioner May has had a workshop with the community on it, we've said we believe in it in some spots. This is a location that I know of, and she's right about that trailer park across the street, this is a, this is actually a great upgrade to that, what's adjacent to it. And when I say great, it's a great upgrade, and if we're going to be a community that believes in it, we, this is, I can't think of a better place. So I'm going to drive by and make sure, I'm looking, I remember knocking on doors in those trailers, and I can recall one of the trailers I went into, almost falling through a, a part of the trailer door, you know?
Absolutely.
Is that location?
Yeah, that's across the street from that. Right between Edward Street?
Say it out loud in the microphone, they'll pull it up.
Before you get to Edward Street?
Edward, yes.
Edward, yeah, I know. I've been in some places. Yeah, Edward and Teresa. And, and so we may experience some pushback from the people on those blocks, but I'd rather doubt it.
Yeah.
But if we do, we have to make a decision as to whether this is what we believe in. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to make a decision as a commission. And for you, we appreciate you bringing it before us, because basically, you have, you willing to invest in the property, it's not our responsibility to determine necessarily the cost. You know, you're telling us, and if people want to pay for that, because it's a tiny home, they're willing to do that.
And, and a lot of customers that would qualify for affordable housing, down payment assistance, they would qualify in low income or that category, and then you, it's still city of Daytona Beach, subtract that 30 or 40,000 off of what that actual purchase price is, their first mortgage would be minus whatever that is.
Okay.
Plus, there are some closing costs assistance, so they would be in a win-win situation.
Are we in agreement that we want to allow them and encourage staff to do? Mr. Morris?
She knows, Mr. Morris.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's get them on in here.
Okay.
We can make a decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is it Douglas Pettit? Pettit?
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm here tonight to say that the county of Volusia, they can vote on whatever they want to vote for, they're doing a fine job over there, and I support all of their decisions. Billy Wheeler is doing a fine job, and the entire county council there are doing a fine job. I attend a lot of their meetings, and they had a state of the county over at the Ocean Center, it was absolutely wonderful. You was there, Ken, at that state of the county address, and they keep the people informed on what they're doing. So the entire? So the entire Veteran Memorial Bridge, they put that together. I was one of the people that sat on the committee to make that happen. There's problems over there, too, as far as people marking up the bridge, homeless people hanging around there, and that is not being patrolled. I'd also like to say that I'm supporting Steve Miller and his bid for Zone 3 seat. He is the best candidate for the job, so we're advertising for him on our social media and in the public, so we need somebody who's gonna be accessible to the constituents, and right now, we don't have a lot of that. I'm also happy that we had the four votes tonight before everybody else came along to vote on restoring that recreation building. That building needs to be restored and bought. I have seen this city spend a lot of money in the golf course that have lost money for years here in the City of Daytona Beach, and it's a disgrace that that is still happening. You have sit around here for years and seen them let that golf course run up all that money and losing, and yet tonight, you sit here and did not, some of you didn't want to restore that building, so I'm glad that we had the four votes and then the rest of you came along. The city aisle pavilion is a disgrace. I am on the library board, and I visit that pavilion on a daily basis. It's full of bird feces. I've told you about that in the past. Charisse came in and told you about it, other people. I would like to see this city correct that problem. Since you've been in office, Mayor Henry, it has gotten worse. People don't even have access to use that. That is our provision. You're here to do the people's work, and we want you to get that pavilion cleaned up and let the people get out and be able to utilize it like they did before. Unprofessional conduct by city officials would not be tolerated. I want everybody to come to this podium or sit in this meeting to be treated with respect. You read this statement that Chisholm left here about telling people how to act. Make it happen. As it is.
Our next speaker is Douglas Pettit, and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and Mr. Feature, good evening. I want to thank you for allowing me to come here tonight and introduce myself to you as a candidate for the county council at large seat. My name's Doug Pettit. I am a retired United States Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel, did 26 years in the Marine Corps, and as if that wasn't challenging enough, what did I do after that? I decided to become a school teacher. So I used the Troop to Teachers program and went into school teaching. Most of my 15 years of teaching were here in Volusia County at a variety of different schools, and I finished two years ago at Seabreeze. And so, go Sandcrabs, you betcha. You know, I'm gonna go off my comments here for a second, because I want to say something very, very much about what happened here tonight, and your words were inspiring. Somebody said to me, when you run for county, for, for public office, and this is my first time, you will be inspired at times, and this was inspiring tonight, and your comments about we were inspiring, Ms. Reed, I appreciate that. They were inspiring to see the citizens reacting, you know, reacting with you to get a project done that seemed to have some merit and some, some, some worth, and so I, I'm inspired by that. I, I came tonight mainly to express my understanding of the need for, to cooperate for the county and the city to cooperate together and express to you that, that I understand that I, there was a gentleman stood up here a while ago and talked about the, a win-win situation. I took the Dale Carnegie courses years ago and, you know, influence friends and make friends, influence people, and then, and one of the, one of the big parts about that was the win-win. Any relationship you get into, whether it's a personal relationship, whether it's a business relationship or political relationship, there needs to be a win-win. And if there's not a win-win, then it's not a good relationship, and that's what I promised to you, to try to work toward is a win-win situation with us, between the county and the, and the, and the city. In the first few weeks of, of my campaigning, as I've tried to get out and, and meet around, I've done a lot of listening, mainly listening is what I've done. And one of the issues that I came across, quite frankly, along with many others, was the affordable housing issue. So my, my comment to you this evening is, and I'm sure you know this, many of your constituents might not know, and one of the things people talk about is how do we fund it? There's already a funding mechanism in place. It's called the Sadowski Fund, and I'm sure many of you already know about that. The problem with Sadowski Fund is the state of Florida has a balanced budget amendment, and the politicians in Tallahassee go into the Sadowski Fund every year, and they raid it. Sadowski Fund gives low-income mortgages to, to, I mean, gives low-interest mortgages to low-income people. It also works on giving developers some incentives, financial incentives. But the, the state goes in every year and raids it. It's been funded every year the last two years fully by Governor DeSantis. This year, we think it might not get raided. I encourage you as a political body and your, your constituents to contact your state legislators and tell them to keep their hands off the Sadowski Fund this year, so this five, potentially $5 to $6 million, what it's for. Thank you and appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina, and on deck is Pamela Reed.
My name is Suzanne Odina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive, Daytona Beach. I gave a copy of my sister's statements on the historic rec center for y'all. She wasn't able to be here tonight. Apologies to Paula, but she's very much in favor of it as a tourist, as someplace to go that doesn't require a monster ticket to get in and a place of interest, and she is a military mother. The second thing, and there he is, okay, there are four of us in the room that are on the Affordable Housing Committee, so I will tread carefully. One of the biggest issues is the NIMBY issue and not my backyard with a small house. Some of you, I've shared with this photo. Some may not have seen it. I suggest a field trip. It's really close, you can walk right across the street. This is a 12-foot-wide house on a 25-foot-wide lot. So there is housing such as that that is very well-accepted. This is very well-cared-for, was built in 1910 in a historic area. Both Commissioner May and Commissioner Strickland are familiar with the homes on North Oleander that are between Riverview and Jessamine. It's a courtyard community where they took four lots and put 10 houses that face each other. It's a beautiful thing, again, another historic community, so it is not something new, and it is in my backyard. Please, when we come before you, my company comes before you with someone who wants to put in infill properties that would be affordable for the 50% of our people that don't make a whole lot of money, please keep these things in mind. It's already here, so you're not changing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Our next speaker is Pamela Reed, and on deck is John Nicholson. Is there a Pamela Reed, it looks like?
No.
408?
She's not out there.
Okay. Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
No better.
And on deck is Frederick Brown.
John looks sleepy. John, you sleepy?
Nope.
Okay.
Getting old, it's hard getting up.
I know, still.
On the rec center, took a trip around the properties that we have, parks. There are over 12 entities that are willing to give us money. This property, rec center, is on the river. We didn't mention find, we didn't mention half a dozen different things. Secondly, the Echo, they're having a problem. They have $20 million they've got to get rid of, and last year, it was like $3 million that they gave away. There's plenty of money in all of these, so it's not going to be an issue of funding to get this thing done. Secondly, tiny homes, and for several of you, quantity of, you remember tiny homes? There's a way of, one of those, there's two buildings together, of joining them and getting homes that have four or five bedrooms, two and a half baths, because there are some families that are extended families, mother, grandmother, nieces, nephew, they're all living together. I had a family that stayed in a motel next to the house. It was a woman and her husband, her mother and her three kids in the studio. It was unbelievable, but they made it work, but they shouldn't have to. So I would like you to at least take a look at these and see if you, if it's something you might like. A design district. Almost every city I've been to has a design district, an area where you go and you buy lamps and chairs and all kinds of stuff. There's an area on North Beach Street after you get past Fairview, perfect for it, has the, all the amenities to, to, to readily have a design district on the north side. Suzanne, who was on your Main Street Board, talked about having an art district south of Main Street, between Main Street and ISB, where the artist could live in their homes, work in their homes, and sell out of their homes, which I thought would be a great idea. For many of these things, we can just ask, like George Burden is on Racing and Rec. All we have to do is call them up, what's the possibility of getting a Racing and Rec? Pat Northey, what's the possibility of getting an Echo? We will know in advance in like 24 hours, what's the possibility of financing the Racing and Rec? So I'm asking you to take a look at these, and I also was at the county council meeting, and what Billy was talking about is one of the ladies got up and talked about the 11,000 trucks that were coming in and out during the day. That's what she was talking about, the idea that there's only going to be 300 trucks. So those people, when they get to the intersection, will see one truck either coming or going. It's 600 trucks, yes, but it's one truck going in and out is two trips. So when you divide it by 24, you're ending up, when they go to that intersection, they're either going to be a truck going into the plant or coming out. It's not. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Charisse Boyd. Okay, I'll call her again, just to see.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, which you should all have memorized by now. I'm gonna have to amend my remarks because in lack of a attorney's report this evening, so there's a few other things I'll have to cover at a later date. From the, I'm sure you're aware of it, the city charter, section 2, 215, states the duties of the city attorney. The city attorney reports directly to the city commission. On January 19th of this year, the minutes still aren't posted publicly yet, but I do know they've been approved, the city commission voted, and you work for us, seven to zero to have our city attorney pursue action in the court and file a petition. As of March 24th, and I know you all have a copy and email, if you don't, if you're unfamiliar, I do have copies of it here available for you to read, okay? It required a note from a citizen to the city manager to say, what's the story? We're now several months down the highway, nothing's happened. To the city manager's credit, he responded within minutes. We still haven't heard any report, and I am grossly disappointed this evening. I've requested this several times, and I've so far received nothing but a blank stare. I'm not sure why the city attorney is not following the orders of the city ordinance 2, 215 and doing what he was directed to do by the city commission. But I urge you all to require this in the next meeting, if he's not prepared to give a report, to require that the city attorney does report on the status of the Bridgeport Heights property. Now, Mr. Mayor, I know you're in favor of this. We had a seven to zero vote on it, in favor of it. The time clock has been ticking. I don't want to run into a statute of limitations situation here. We need to get going on this, okay? You know, so many of our projects get stalled in litigation. I don't understand, when you give an order on January 19th, why? Here we are in the middle of April, and we still have no report from our city attorney. I'm gonna end my remarks right there. Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Brown, I'll make sure that, what's going on with the minutes and why they're not up there, and make sure that they get up there tomorrow.
The last minute's currently available to the public is December 1st.
I see that, and I've done them since.
Yeah, and I know you have, and it's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. What I was gonna reference those minutes, I had to go listen to the whole video over again.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Yes.
I mean, I, I serve at your pleasure, I, I don't serve at Mr. Brown's pleasure. So I report to you, not to the citizens, as you all know, and I have reported to you. I've reported to you individually. I've sent you emails as to the status. We have drafted a declaratory action to be filed. Prior to filing, I contacted the owners for, the owner's attorney, rather, to discuss whether there might be any possibility for negotiation or resolution of the matter. We have drafted a settlement agreement. It's been sent to them for consideration. When it comes back, when it comes back, we'll, of course, be sharing that with you to see if you want to move forward with approval. So that's where we're at currently, working on that negotiation. If settlements, negotiations fall through, we'll be proceeding with filing the complaint.
Thank you, Bob. You're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yes, and I do recall all the correspondence on it, too. Our next speaker is Charisse Boyd, if she's still here. Okay. Our next speaker, is it Osti Tucker?
He's gone.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby. And on deck is Jared Ophir?
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for the vote on the rec center. Very much look forward to getting on to the next step on that property. One of the things that I did send you all an email, it was entitled, "One Last Plea for the Rec Center." Included in that was a chart that I built based on whether, the basic designations of the historic properties we have. And I outlined three categories, Black History Trail, nationally designated or locally designated. And when you look at that, and then you look at what, even just the properties the city owned, and I did my best guessing, I think I got most of them, it's kind of a mess. We have things that are on the Black Heritage Trail that have no historic designation. We have things like the, the Jackie Robinson Field that are on the Strut Trail, nationally designated, but not locally designated, and there could be reasons why that happens. And then there's a lot of historically designated places of any one of those three categories that are privately owned, like the Howard Thurman House, and there's, you know, that could, they could be encouraged to change their designation, but they can't be forced. But I think before we jump in, the rec center has become a pressing issue, but even I think the rec center could be less pressing. I think the pressing issue right now is to look at a company like Place Economics. I'm not gonna stop saying this. We need to learn how to, I know, I'm sorry. We need to learn how to exploit our history for profit, and that's the company that I think, is when I've discovered, there may be others, but they give a free 30-minute consultation. I wish someone, that you have? Okay, good, that would be wonderful, because I think we've spent a lot of money trying to figure out how much it's gonna cost to repair the rec, $20,000. I'm not a fan of consultants and studies, but I think before we jump, what? You know, I, okay. I, I'm just, all I want to say is, before we jump willy-nilly into coming up with our own historic plan, because we should engage experts on this. They could tell us possibly the optimal way to apply for the grants, what's worth doing, what's not worth doing. I think we're, we need to exploit our history better, and we need expert guidance on this, so I really hope you can do that. And I think what happens with the rec center could be part of that. I don't know that we need to rush ahead quite that quickly at 90 days, but I think we just need to get more information about how to exploit our history. Thank you very much.
I don't disagree with you on that last line, on most of what you say, but I do think we need to know what the citizens in this committee believes we should do, so we gotta, you gotta have a utility. But okay, I feel you, and do that 30-minute.
And I'm sorry, what's the last name?
Hoffpower. You were, you were very close.
Okay.
Just slur it, it comes out fine. Jared Hoffpower, the 508 rival.
Jared Hoff Power, the 508 Rybelle. I'm just, I, we've been here just right on a year now. This is an exciting community and one I've really come to love, so thank you. I really just wanted to say tonight, thank you for the entire council and the city for investing in our open spaces and in our parks and keeping things looking nice. I've noticed some very specific work done at Lenox Park. I know Commissioner May has reached out to local residents, find out, well, what do you, what do you want to see at the park? Who uses the park? When do they use it? And so I know some of those things are coming. We've had a sign replaced that was destroyed. Just the sign at the, at the entrance of the park was dilapidated and it just put on, you know, right from the get-go, it was a bad, sort of a bad look. So that was replaced. We've had some beautiful new benches put in in the last week, some concrete pads, we're not sure what they're for, but there's some other things going on. We hope that, you guys, someone considers lighting, safety lighting, appropriate lighting for the park. It's very dark in a lot of the back corners, but I know that's, things are in the works and I just appreciate reaching out to your community. Thank you, Commissioner May. We did have some problems last couple days this week with some campers setting up in the park. And I just wanted to recognize the, the police department for handling that situation with compassion and care. And that was, that was really, it was nice to see that, that doesn't always happen. Happened to be that we responded to, there was a woman in the park setting up camp for the night and the police department was able to respond with a female officer with that too, which I noticed that and that it just, it makes a big difference, I think. So again, that was, I think that's really all I wanted to say. So thank you guys very much and it's exciting to be part of this community.
Thank you for being here and thank you for noticing what we noticed.
Yeah, I appreciate you commenting on the fact that we increased police presence because that was a big thing, so thank you for sharing that. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak and on deck is Steve Miller.
Jenny.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue. Thank you all for your votes and deliberations this evening. Also, thank you Commissioner May and thank you everybody for reappointing me to the BTAV, the Beautification Tree Advisory Board. Plants are like a Trojan horse for addressing all sorts of environmental and social and even economic issues. And my personal aspiration is for us to become a food city, just like with food growing everywhere. And then also to become a sponge city, which is with really healthy soil and plants absorbing water. At one meeting, I wore toast clipped to my hat. If I was gonna wear anything tonight, I would be wearing sponges clipped to my hat because we've had a more rainy spring, which is awesome. But we have to have our ground be absorbent through healthy plants and healthy soil. On that score, I want to praise Andy Holmes and David Waller and all of Public Works for their attentiveness to landscaping concerns. Among other things, they have set a policy to prune the Sabal palm in a moderate way, nine-three. Everybody, everybody has seen me do this at meetings now, nine-three. Not, not like the, a tall stick, but like a full palm tree. And it preserves the tree canopy and the natural beauty of our area. And that's another thing that plants can do, they give us a natural, regional identity. And then also thank everybody who stood up and talked about tiny homes, small homes, whatever you want to call them. There is, NIMBYism is a real problem, but that street, that is, I think it's called Cottage Street or Cottage Avenue, it's like literally right across the street from here. And there's like a row of tiny little old houses along there. They're super adorable and tiny houses are needed and as you were saying, Mr. Mayor, it's like, what do we stand for? If we get some NIMBYs, we can, we can say back to them, hey, what do we stand for here? What if, you know, your, your grandmother might need affordable housing, your young student who just graduated might need a small starter house. So we're all gonna be in that boat one way or the other. And there is a movement called YIMBY afoot. It's called Yes in My Backyard. And there's like an Orlando YIMBY chapter. And I guess if, if there's a Daytona YIMBY chapter, I'll, I'll lead it or whatever. And then, oh yeah, Commissioner May, about the cleanup on Main Street, I was so glad you said that because I had been thinking in the past couple weeks that I needed to walk down there with bags, because I haven't done that in a long time. And so, yeah, that area gets a little messy.
It's a long time.
That'll be perfect. Yeah, that'll be awesome. I think that's it. Thank you all for having such a late meeting. It proves our dedication. But also, I might even be able to stay up late enough for the stand-up comedy because usually I'd be asleep. Now I'm up. Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Miller and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street. I just want to say, thank you to the mothers of Daytona Beach and the fathers, of course, and, and to the city manager. I've been asking for someone to file for the PAA program. When our chief left, Chip Wood, several years ago, he took our charter for our PAA program. I've been asking and begging for three years about this. So, Mr. Feacher, you're the city manager, can we please have a PAA program? Because there is also funding attached to that for our children. And I haven't seen that charter yet and I don't know what not anybody filed, but I'm kind of tired of asking and begging. So now I'm asking you, sir, could you look into that for us? Secondly, I really enjoyed the meeting tonight. Oh man, this was a great meeting. Man, 24 people got up and spoke in favor of this project. And I'm glad the commissioners listened. You know, sometimes I think is it really representative of the people? Man, when 100% of your constituents come out and say they want something, you know, I, I kind of think that if I was an elected official, my job is to represent the people. And last but not least, we got a Neighborhood Watch meeting coming up on Monday, the second Monday of the month. This month, we're gonna have Barbara Gertman, who's the county councilman from Zone 1. She'll be our guest speaker. Last, last month, Mr. Mayor, we had the chief judge for the circuit, did a great job. But I want to thank Paula for her support and Donette, thank you too as well. And I'm looking forward to coming to your meeting, okay? Steve Miller, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And our final speaker tonight is Doyle Lewis.
Let's go out with a bang. All right, Doyle, take us home, Doyle.
Good evening, Ann, Commission. It's been a wonderful week. I got four tiny things to talk about. When we're talking about affordable homing, homes for people, we can use just about anything because it's just a word. I mean, I've seen cottages that are 500 square feet. I've seen tiny homes that are 500 square feet. I've seen bungalows that are just a little bit over 500 square feet, all around this area, too. So when someone says tiny homes, you can use two or three different words on that. That's just one of my little pet peeves. The house I actually grew up in is, was only like 580 square feet and there were six of us in that house. Number two is the homeless in the poor around the parks, which was already spoken on. I'm around City Island, I'm around the beach a lot. If the beach had a library, I would love that, but it just don't. So I come to City Island Park a lot around the baseball field and things to study for my criminal justice classes. So I would like to see that just cleaned up more. We have a lot of wild critters with feathers that are dropping things. We need to kind of clean that up because it's pretty bad around some of the areas where we have roofs and stuff. They go in there and use it and stuff. We need to wash that up. A lot of people commented on it the last couple of weeks since summer kids were out and things and there's been spring break and they wouldn't even be able to use some of the things. The City Island Rec Center, thank y'all for voting to allow more time on that because that is history. That has a lot of history behind it, especially in the marine area with all the clubhouses, all the boats. And last but not least, been forgetting to say this, but I haven't been to a lot of the meetings lately in the last year. I asked the county about it and everybody told me it was on the city of Daytona Beach. I just have a small question about the beach showers. What's the point on having a beach shower in the sand when you can't wash all the sand off? I don't know if that's y'all or not, but I was told it was.
It's in the sand, it's the beach.
Okay.
The sand, they run the beach.
Okay, well, the, the law enforcement is actually county, so.
If it's in the sand, it's the counties.
Okay. So that's it.
All right.
God bless.
All right. Good night, Daytona Beach. Continue to be great.